Halifax looks nice.
A lot nicer outside than in this building, but nevertheless it's getting pretty late here. So after the meeting I'll be free.
Hey Sean, should we be able to hear DCB?
I'm standing up.
It's the hot water scene, don't you?
It's not hot enough for me. I take that water and then it boils. I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody's here Natalie's virtual. And I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I can do it. The August 16th 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
See if anyone else wants to do it. Wes puts up his head and you're already reading.
It's Quinn's job.
Yep, eight years of moving the agenda. All those in favor? You guys know the history of paddles?
No.
Yeah, okay. The history of paddles is we were at a EMRB meeting when Nolan was the mayor and he miscounted a vote and it was close. And so the next time we showed up at EMRB we had paddles. So I think that's why the city adopted it, just to be clear. It was to support the Rogers place. And Dell was looking for money. Alright. I'm going to turn it over now to Cindy for municipal naming.
Sorry, bear with me struggling a bit here. There we go. Good afternoon council and thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. Tomorrow we are launching a very comprehensive engagement strategy to gather community input on the city's naming policy and possible updates and changes to that policy. In the spirit of transparency, we did want to provide counsel with an overview so that you're not only aware of what will be happening across the city over the next four or so months, but also to sort of help make sure you have a really good understanding of what the report that you will be receiving in the new year will entail. So without further delay, I will hand over the floor to the consultants who will be happy to introduce themselves and walk us through a presentation.
Wonderful, thank you Cindy. If we could have it so that Russ lead them from proactive can share his screen, he'll be running us through the slides. Perfect. We're all ready to go. Great. Well, good day Mayor Heron and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for having us present today. I would like to begin with a land acknowledgement. Big Waki Meg is a Cree word meaning red willow describing the place surrounding the Sturgeon River. St. Albert has over 9,000 years of storied indigenous history prior to the arrival of Father Albert Lecoeur. And it was one of the largest Métis communities in the Métis homeland. So we'd like to acknowledge the Métis, Nahio, Dene, Nikota Sioux, Anishnaabe and the Nidzitipi within this traditional territory now recognized as Treaty Six, Métis Nation Region Four and the St. Albert Sturgeon Métis Local. We acknowledge that the municipalities of Alberta, including this one, are rooted in colonial ideologies. The history that many of us know about St. Albert was a history that was written by settlers and not from the perspective of the original inhabitants of this land. Through this project, our team commits to creating equity and engagement, meaning elevating the voices and perspectives of indigenous residents in the city and telling the stories of indigenous partners from communities nearby. I also commit to helping your municipality uphold its commitments to the TRC calls to action and the Payonin report that was written especially for you. So finally, we'd like to acknowledge the diversity of St. Albert, indigenous and non-indigenous who are continually learning, living and raising families on this land. We'd like to honor and celebrate this territory today and for future generations. We are all treaty people and we have a responsibility to respect one another and to respect the land that we share.
Well, good afternoon everyone. I am Tania Gwynn. I had the opportunity to meet most of you in December with my mom and my sister Shawnee and Corolla. So I'm Tania Gwynn. I'm with 1111 Consulting and I have the honor to work on this project. I like to introduce myself based on my grandparents because I have such a connection to this land. So I am from the Cunningham clan, a descendant from Chester Cunningham, who is my grandfather, who his grandfather was a Henry Cunningham that took Métis script here in St. Albert. I'm also a descendant of Florence Gwynn, who her mother took Métis script up in Gruard, Alberta, however was born here in St. Albert, was part of the Michelle band from Chief Michelle Calagill. So I am the project manager on this particular project and the point of contact as well as working on indigenous engagement and public engagement. I also like to take the opportunity to introduce some of my other team members. That would be Elliot Young, who's also worked with the city of St. Albert in the past. Elliot is from Pibiguan-Pitaguan, from the Erma skin Cree Nation as well as Sutina Nation.
Halifax looks nice.
A lot nicer outside than in this building, but nevertheless, it's getting pretty late here. So after the meeting, I'll be free.
Hey Sean, should we be able to hear D C B?
I'm standing up.
It's just the hot water scene, don't you?
It's not hot enough for me. I like it right now. I take that water and then it boils. I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody's here. Natalie's virtual. And I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I can do it. The August 16th, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
See if anyone else wants to do it. Wes puts up his head and you're already reading.
It's Quinn's job.
That is a job.
Yep. Eight years of moving the agenda. All those in favor? You guys know the history of paddles? Yeah. Okay. The history of paddles is we were at a E M R B meeting when Nolan was the mayor and he miscounted a vote and it was close. And so the next time we showed up at E M R B, we had paddles. So I think that's why the city adopted it, just to be clear.
Was that just?
It was to support the Rogers place. And Dell was looking for money. Alright. I'm going to turn it over now to Cindy for municipal naming.
Sorry, bear with me struggling a bit here. There we go. Good afternoon, council, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. Tomorrow, we are launching a very comprehensive engagement strategy to gather community input on the city's naming policy and possible updates and changes to that policy. In the spirit of transparency, we did want to provide counsel with an overview so that you're not only aware of what will be happening across the city over the next four or so months, but also to sort of help make sure you have a really good understanding of what the report that you will be receiving in the new year will entail. So without further delay, I will hand over the floor to the consultants who will be happy to introduce themselves and walk us through a presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Cindy. If we could have it so that Russ Leedom from Proactive can share his screen, he'll be running us through the slides. Perfect. So we're all ready to go. Great. Well, good day, Mayor Heron and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for having us present today. I would like to begin with a land acknowledgement. Big Waki Mag is a Cree word meaning red willow, describing the place surrounding the Sturgeon River. St. Albert has over 9,000 years of storied Indigenous history prior to the arrival of Father Albert Lacombe, and it was one of the largest Métis communities in the Métis homeland. So we'd like to acknowledge the Métis, Nahio, Deni, Nikota Sioux, Anishnaabe, and the Nidzitipi within this traditional territory now recognized as Treaty Six, Métis Nation Region Four, and the St. Albert Sturgeon Métis Local. We acknowledge that the municipalities of Alberta, including this one, are rooted in colonial ideologies. The history that many of us know about St. Albert was a history that was written by settlers and not from the perspective of the original inhabitants of this land. Through this project, our team commits to creating equity and engagement, meaning elevating the voices and perspectives of Indigenous residents in the city and telling the stories of Indigenous partners from communities nearby. I also commit to helping your municipality uphold its commitments to the T R C calls to action and the Payonin Report that was written especially for you. So finally, we'd like to acknowledge the diversity of St. Albert Indigenous and non-Indigenous who are continually learning, living, and raising families on this land. We'd like to honor and celebrate this territory today and for future generations. We are all treaty people and we have a responsibility to respect one another and to respect the land that we share.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am Tania Gwynn. I had the opportunity to meet most of you in December with my mom and my sister Shawnee and Corolla. So I'm Tania Gwynn. I'm with 1111 Consulting and have the honor to work on this project. I like to introduce myself based on my grandparents because I have such a connection to this land. So I am from the Cunningham clan, a descendant from Chester Cunningham, who is my grandfather, who his grandfather was a Henry Cunningham that took Métis script here in St. Albert. I'm also a descendant of Florence Gwynn, who her mother took Métis script up in Gruard, Alberta, however, was born here in St. Albert, was part of the Michelle Band from Chief Michelle Calagill. So I am the project manager on this particular project and the point of contact as well as working on Indigenous engagement and public engagement. I also like to take the opportunity to introduce some of my other team members. That would be Elliot Young, who's also worked with the city of St. Albert in the past. Elliot is from Pibiguan-Pitaguan, from the Erma skin Cree Nation, as well as Sutinah Nation. And Peyton Matters, she is a Métis woman living up in High Prairie, Alberta. And so they have been working on the research and environmental scan for this project. I'll pass it back to Blaze for her introduction.
Thank you, Tania. So hello, everyone. My name is Blaze Fontaine. I'd like to introduce myself so that you can get to know me a little bit better. My father is Algonquin from Pickback McDon, First Nation in Golden Lake, Ontario, and my mother is first generation Swiss Canadian. So my Algonquin name is Anamunikay, which means little thundercloud. And the more that you get to know me, the more you'll see how storms suddenly seem to appear when I show up. I was very accurately named. So my parents raised me to embrace all unique sides of my cultural background, and they also told me that I was able to accomplish anything in this road that I set my mind to. So I took that to heart and in 2018, I co-founded Proactive Planning with Rest Leedom. And my official title is Director of Engagement. So I've been doing public and Indigenous engagement for 14 years now. I started my career with Canada's first public engagement consultancy. And I've worked in a diversity of sectors, including the B C provincial government, post-secondary institutions, oil and gas, Indigenous communities and municipalities, and of course, the planning profession. So for this project in particular, I am leading up the communications and public engagement work. I really want you to know that I am immensely passionate about this project and that I will make every effort to do this work with integrity and a deep respect for your community. I would like to thank you for having me here and for entrusting me to do this important work with the city. And I'll hand it over to Russ.
Thank you, Blaze. So yeah, my name is Russ Leedom. So I'm a professional registered land use planner by trade as well as a G I S specialist. So I've been in planning and by virtue engagement for over 15 years now and began as the Director of Planning with Proactive about four years ago. It's really an honor to support Tania and Blaze on this project in an engagement and policy-related role. Also having Harry on the project, who is in fact my mentor in becoming a professional planner. So I look forward to today and really to help this incredibly important work with the city of St. Albert. So I'll pass it over to Harry now.
Thank you, Russ. My name's Harry Harker and I'm excuse me, phone going off in the background. This is my 50th year of community planning and 40 of those years I have been a full member of the Canadian Institute of Planners. Over the course of those 50 years, I have done varieties of different kinds of engagement and varieties of different settings with various levels of adverse conditions, as well as with very passionate people. And I'm delighted to be in a position to work with a great young team and to be able to share my experience with them. Some of you may know that I also spent nine or 10 years as a C A O. Most recently, I had a three-year term with the town of High River and recently have spent some time as the interim C A O at the city of Chestermere. So I have an understanding of the governmental process that all of you are going through and will provide advice based to the team.
He's coming back.
Great. Thank you so much, Harry. So yeah, we're gonna get started. So to begin, I wanted to help council kind of get their feet on the ground for this presentation and get a sense of what to expect from us within this hour. We're going to talk about how the municipal naming project came to be and the multitude of factors that influenced the inception of this project. So next, we're going to provide you with an overview of the environmental scan that was completed by our research team, Elliot and Peyton. And then next, we'll give you an overview of our engagement approach, our strategy, and our anticipated timeline. And then finally, we'll be telling you about how the results of our engagement program will inform the revised naming policy that will be presented to you in early 2023. Great. So why are we here? So first and foremost, the city of St. Albert wants to update its municipal naming policy to be reflective of the diversity and shared values of this community. So policy should reflect the residents of a city, or in the very least, consider those residents. So the updated municipal naming policy should be a document that has a sense of collective ownership in the city. And that's how you get residents excited to be a part of this type of work. So historically, the city of St. Albert has named places after people. But as we're becoming increasingly aware of, sometimes the actions of those people don't always hold up to today's standards. And so our mechanism for getting the community to take a sense of ownership in this revised policy is to have them share with us their values and visions for the policy and to help us define a process for naming and renaming. So what do we hope to achieve? So not to sound redundant, but we want to create a naming policy that was shaped and informed by the public and one that reflects the values of the greater St. Albert community and also one that can stand the test of time, which I think is something everybody can be on board with. In this policy, we need to establish a clearly defined process and evaluation criteria for naming and renaming. And this is once again, to be reflective of the community values. And of course, at the end of the day, we want to establish the city as a renowned leader in public engagement when it really counts and to position the city as champions for creating a modern naming policy. So let's review some of the more pressing factors that led to this project. So in June 2021, there were multiple requests from the public for the city to remove the name Grandin from municipal assets and street names. As you're probably already aware, Grandin was one of the primary individuals responsible for the establishment and administration of residential schools, of which the city of St. Albert has two former residential school sites. So next, in a review of medium and major municipalities in Canada, it was discovered that many of them provide a clearly defined process for renaming and that is something that St. Albert can obviously look to for inspiration when your naming policy gets revised. And also, it has to be said that municipalities across the country have initiated renaming of place names that just simply do not align with the values of modern day Canada. And St. Albert has this immense opportunity to also become leaders in this work and to do it with integrity and careful planning and care towards your community. So I also want to take a moment to state that this work isn't just about Grandin and the place names of people associated with residential schools or place names of people associated with injustice or violence towards Indigenous people. Renaming work has been happening across the country for so many reasons. Just in the last few weeks alone, Edmonton renamed a school whose namesake was found to be a member of the K K K. And a high school in Halifax was also renamed from Prince Andrew to Woodland High School in response to Prince Andrew's recent disgraces. So I want to touch base on the council motions that have been issued today. I don't need to read these to you verbatim because obviously they were put in motion by you. But the first was a motion to propose a business case to undertake revisions to the municipal naming policy that would also include consideration of the Payonin Report, T R C, and the Diversity and Inclusion Declaration of the City. And also this motion where council approved the budget to undertake significant public engagement and recommendations regarding possible renaming of municipal properties associated with those involved in the residential school system. And lastly, this motion for administration to provide council with an updated draft policy in 2022 and to conduct comprehensive stakeholder and public engagement to gather community input. Okay, so we've hopefully established the need for this project and the need for revising the policy. But what that looks like more than anything is a clearly defined process for naming and renaming that is informed by your community's values and vision. So let's bring it back to some of the foundational pieces of literature that the city defines itself by. So the Diversity and Inclusion Declaration, it states that the community is to be a gathering place, that it's to be welcoming and inclusive and that we must be curious and kind in our endeavors as residents and that we all need to know that we belong. So the declaration, it complements the existing naming policy which states that names may be repealed if the name is recognized with significant dishonor to the community, province, or nation. The policy is great in principle, but it lacks a process for completing renaming and also a criteria for naming. And we also need to look elsewhere to municipalities across the country to learn what they've done and how to extract our own best practices that make sense for the city. We need to look at what names are recognized as being dishonorable elsewhere. What have those municipalities done in response to those names being reviewed? And what processes did they follow or create in their journeys and how we can learn from that as well? And finally, all of these things considered, how does the community of St. Albert feel about place names that have come under review? And how does your community define dishonorable? And how can we ensure that the city's place names are a reflection of your diversity and inclusion declaration while also living up to the commitments of the Payonin Report and the T R C calls to action for municipalities? And it brings us to this, our goal for the project and our metric for success. Developing a municipal naming process that is informed and approved by the public, by our diverse stakeholder groups, and guided by our Indigenous community partners. So this is your project flowchart. And please don't try to read the slide. You'll get hopelessly lost. I'm just going to give you a really quick overview and then we can leave a copy of this flowchart with you for your future reference. So this flowchart covers everything that I just spoke about, but I want to drive home this. So the research and information that we've gathered to date will provide the foundation of our public awareness program. So the public awareness program shares these main arteries with public engagement work, but they are distinct in some ways. So it's very important that our engagement is educational, that it provides the appropriate degree of context to your residents so that when we ask them for feedback for their participation, that they're coming from an informed place, not a emotional or knee-jerk reaction place. Although we can't negate that from happening entirely, that appetite for people to learn should never be underestimated. And so we do focus on providing high-quality educational content throughout our public engagement. So the feedback that we seek from the public stakeholders and Indigenous community partners, this will inform the revised policy and draft renaming process. The renaming process will be developed by us keeping in mind our guiding questions for engagement, like what should the process be? Who should decide? What is the threshold or criteria for nominating a concern? What community values should inform decision-making? All of these questions should be asked to your community in one form or another and the responses must be taken to heart and to be used to create a complete and modern naming policy and renaming process. And I'm going to pass it over to Tania.
Thanks, Blaze. So I'm just gonna talk about the environmental scan. So our research team, Elliot and Peyton, completed an environmental scan that included 76 instances of renaming work across our country. These included street names, communities, schools, sports teams, parks, and bridges. The sample size was 76. However, there's many more cases to study and to review. But we limited it to 76, just because these are what have been completed. This work is undergoing across the country and worldwide. So this is a lot of work that we can look to and reflect on as we work through this project. Of the 76 case studies, 60 of them completed renaming or new policy around renaming. Keep in mind, this doesn't include the cases that are still in process, like I mentioned earlier. What was interesting was that after a review of a name that occurred in 11 instances, municipalities retained that place name, but later renamed it after further public engagement and feedback was received. All in all, there were five instances where municipalities retained the names under review. And usually for a complexity of reasons, like additional context was needed in the place name so that history was better understood. And some municipalities just didn't have the mechanisms in place for public engagement or enacting different policy. But in all, 71 of the 76 cases resulted in a name change or have initiated a process to rename. It was found in the sample size that once street names have gone through a review and public engagement program, the majority of them do end up renaming. Of the 76 cases, 29 street names that were reviewed in the environmental scan, there were only two street names that were retained. It's also interesting to note that through renaming work, that seven communities issued anti-racism statements. Eight communities renamed to honor Indigenous groups. About half of the municipalities had extensive public engagement programs. 11 monuments were either removed or altered. And 10 schools, school boards, and universities renamed assets. Other key findings were that when municipalities engaged with Indigenous community partners early and often, it led to better public reception of the renaming work. As well as clear and transparent engagement with communities and the residents that are most likely to be impacted by the name change was instrumental to having a smooth engagement process. To learn more about the environmental scan, Cindy has a copy of an executive summary prepared. So at your request, if you'd like to contact Cindy, we can send that over to you. Based on what we've learned from other municipalities through the environmental scan and this research work, as well as our experience as a team of community engagement workers, we've developed a process, goals, and tactics that will help us secure high volume and high quality of feedback from St. Albert residents. The process is to develop an executive sorry, the process is to develop and execute an engagement program that's highly informative, embraces diverse perspectives, and provides multiple opportunity for residents to shape and inform future naming policy and a renaming process. Our goal is to be transparent, inclusive, and to have a very comprehensive engagement that leads to a naming policy and a process that will stand the test of time. It will provide clear guidance for council and it will be a project that will be supported by residents. All of our engagement includes virtual and in-person information sessions, surveys, sounding boards. There's going to be educational literature and resources produced particularly for this project for all St. Albert residents, youth workshops, Indigenous engagement and guidance, and key stakeholder engagement, open houses, and of course, concluding your project with a what we heard report. So what does the community engagement look like? In short, community engagement functions reveal a community's values. In short, community engagement functions reveal a community's values. And the values of a community determine a revised renaming policy. We'll be asking questions like what values define your community? This will be used to determine criteria for acceptable naming and revised policy. Another question, who should be consulted in naming? This will help create a process for stakeholder identification and engagement. What should be the criteria for municipal naming? And through this, the themes that will guide future naming. How do we define dishonor? The data collected through this question will be supportive criteria to support the renaming of future asset. A crucial part of the engagement process is to engage and receive guidance from Indigenous community partners. And Indigenous residents of St. Albert. This knowledge will help define. And refine our ideas about naming and renaming criteria. Indigenous communities have been. Long excluded from municipal naming practices and the narrative of St. Albert's history. The original inhabitants of this land are the Metis, the Nehio, the Nekota, Sioux, the Nishanabian, the Sipit. This holds the original place names of this area. We'll be using this information. Shared with us to inform and educate information sessions. And various pieces of educational literature prepared for residents. Because not a lot of people know this history. The city has a genuine opportunity to ensure that the Indigenous voice is not just included, but amplified in this project. And will ensure that those Indigenous voices and perspective receive the respect that they deserve. So questions that we can pose to the Indigenous community. Through Indigenous engagement and guidance are. What original place names should we learn? What is the history before Lakom? This will help create the project educational materials and literature and help share amongst St. Albert residents. How would you like the city to include you in renaming work in the future? How and where should the city be considering historical and original place names? Input from these posed questions will help guide your policy direction, recommendations for Indigenous inclusion. How does some current place names impact you? This will be summarized and shared in the what we heard report and also shared in our information sessions. We should also note that Indigenous guidance is very important to this project. However, the project is about embracing diversity and diverse perspectives. And there are many reasons why a place name could come under review. For example, in one of our key studies in our environmental studies, or sorry, our environmental review. Was Holling Park Peak, which is located in Camore, Alberta. This was renamed from its previous name of Chinaman's Peak all the way back in nineteen ninety seven. So this work has been going on for a long time. And and there's many diverse perspectives. And these perspectives have been identified in key stakeholders. To embrace this diversity throughout the project. So starting today, the CTC page is going live. We will have a registration open for ten days. For residents to sign up for virtual mini information session in September. We will have four of these sessions scheduled. And two additional sessions for the neighborhood of Grandin. These sessions are intended to provide additional information to residents about the project. And for us to record and respond the various questions and concerns they may have this early in the project. Our information sessions will wrap up in the third week of September. And our team will send out follow up surveys to those participants. Between the sessions as well as the survey results. Will be able to start identifying some themes through this feedback we've received. And start to produce the the public information manual to support the project in October. We are currently trying to secure a date with Mayor and Council from Victoria, B.C. To provide a facilitated lunch and learn with St. Albert's Mayor and Council. Victoria is very similar to St. Albert in many ways. One of the similarities is that they have many streets named after people. And they have been doing renaming work underway for several years now. So we believe this is would be a great opportunity for St. Albert Mayor and Council to. Have an opportunity to learn about best practices, what went well, what didn't, lesson learned. But we can keep you posted on this potential date for the future lunch and learn. In November, we'll be hosting a public event called What's in a Name? The session will be facilitated with some really awesome panelists. And we're just currently finalizing the list. But it will provide participants a much deeper dive into municipal naming work and renaming work challenges. The other half of the evening will be a moderated discussion between the public and panelists. We also plan on having a youth workshop to get some fresh perspectives on municipal naming. And focus group sessions will continue throughout the project. Following this, the first week of December, we will have two open house sessions. Where we will share the feedback we've received throughout this project. And and provide some draft policy options for the public to provide feedback on. And lastly, we'll create a comprehensive what we heard report. And of course, naming policy recommendations based on our findings. So thank you for the opportunity to present our project expectations and goals. As well as the opportunity to explain how we will achieve these goals. This project will be impactful and meaningful. And full of education for St. Albert residents and for the community at large. It will honor the Payonin Report and the Truth and Reconciliation Commissions Calls to Actions. They'll also uphold St. Albert's diversity and inclusion declaration. This project will provide and receive truthful and meaningful information and feedback through a safe, respectful. And comprehensive engagement process. That will provide the city with recommendations for revised naming policy. So thank you for that opportunity to present and we'd love to answer questions that you may have now.
Thank you so much and we recognize that council does have another. Heavy agenda item after this, but we hoped we'd have about ten or fifteen minutes to answer any questions you have.
Good afternoon Cindy, a great presentation, looks like a great project. One of the key elements that I I noted. Was a question that was asked, how do we define dishonor? So my question in the lit review, did they find significant work? And is there a consistent definition across the land? It seems to me it's it be a little bit. Difficult to to come up with a definition that pleased everyone.
Thanks for the question, Counselor Broadhead, and I'll pass it over to the consultants to talk specific about the environmental scan findings. But part of why we really wanted to also focus on that is recognizing council's existing municipal naming policy. Does already have a clause, I believe it's clause number five that identifies. That should council choose if a name is found to have brought dishonor, they can make that change already. I think the challenge is in the the absence of a process by which to do that. And that's why we wanted to, you know, sort of enable or empower the current policy that exists. And identify the best way to do that so that we're not just saying to council, yeah, you can do it. We're going to provide council with the flavor or the values that represent this community. To help you in establishing a process to make any of those future decisions that are required.
Thank you Cindy, I can speak to this a little bit. So there were instances, so there's no, there's no quick and dirty answer for you unfortunately. There were instances that. Instances where dishonor was more or less defined in policy. Or more or less defined by a mayor or mayor and council through messaging. And that's generally how dishonor seemed to be defined when it came to reviewing and renaming a place name. What is of note? For us, it's really important that we ask the residents of St. Albert to help us identify the criteria. That could be considered to be dishonorable actions or behavior. Because I think that looks different to some people, but I think there are some shared values that. Most people in society can kind of get behind so. And it seemed to be that in all of the instances that. Almost all of the instances that we reviewed in the environmental scan had something to do. With race or racism or other disgraceful behavior. Like in the case of of Prince Andrew. Yeah, so I think that's kind of all I really have for you right now, but we do look to helping to define. Dishonor for your city and to help create that criteria for renaming.
Fair enough. I mean, I I believe that there are some acts that it's going to be a given. Others where there will be. Well, if they were engaged in this, some of this will be worthy of renaming. And others will say, well, it hasn't quite breached the dishonor total. Anyway, just a question for you, it'll be an interesting exercise to go through. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for your presentation. I just would like a little bit of clarity on on what. What each member is contributing, like you're a fairly large group and I want to know where the land planning fits in or the community planning. Or you know, when you're just kind of getting feedback from from the citizens. I'm not sure what everyone's role is, so to speak.
Should I give a start off with that and then I'll pass it over to Blaze for you to facilitate? Right now, within the city of St. Albert. The Planning and Development Department is generally responsible for a lot of the place names that you see today. The Planning Department also was the original creator of the naming policy back in twenty fifteen. So that's where the connection to the land use planning component is is coming into play. And this is pretty standard across most municipalities. The Planning Department names the roads, the roads inform the names of the parks. There's different policies for how to name roads. And then we also have different types of assets. And when it comes to assets, that's where different departments have different responsibilities. So in the recent renaming of. The to the Inkinla Recreation Facility. That was run through parks and through recreation and parks and not through planning. But in this particular project, we are looking at the name Grandin. And Grandin is not only a name of a neighborhood. But there are, I think, two streets within the city of St. Albert that this would impact. And the Planning Department also works quite closely with Canada Post and Addressing. So that's where, from a municipal perspective, the connection to land planning is. And Blaze, I'll pass it on to get the valued information that we get from your team regarding land planning.
Thanks Christina, I'm just going to pass it over to Russ and or Harry and how you plan to. Incorporate your planning knowledge and expertise into this project.
Well, maybe I'll take the first crack at it and then give Russ a chance. I think that for me, the place names often are significant as people are identifying where they are. So understanding the context of a place name can have a impact on people and how they feel about the place they live. And there are also at times it is representative of the historical aspect. And so how do we incorporate this, particularly when you find, I I'm sure we'll find a number of place names that or. There could be a conflict between if we change a name or recommend a change or there's a problem. Does that mean for the rest of the of the area with that? Is it a, it does it in fact indicate a change of land use along the way? And so just that experience, I think the other thing that is there for planning and certainly in my career. The public engagement side is is a big part of what we do. Particularly as we're getting into changes in names, changes in land uses suggesting these things. And people feel very specific about the places they're in. And so does this in fact add a dimension or create a challenge that we need to be? The city needs to be considered when they're considering, when they're looking at a place name change.
Yeah, those are really excellent. I don't have a lot to add. I'm just maybe speak about my contribution, you know. To back that up, I have a lot of experience working with policy and implementation and that sort of stuff. So really dealing with that connection between the logistics in land use planning and the implications of that. But also to second what Harry said that, you know. Engagement is secondary in planning and absolutely everything we do. So we obviously have a lot of experience in that and dealing with the public on these sort of issues, so.
Can I jump on real quick about the planning side? So Christina, this a question for you, not the consultants. While we redo the naming policy. Are we going to look at how traditionally named neighborhoods after a letter of the alphabet? Because, you know, we've been running out of letters. And when we grow into the Attic land, we are definitely going to run out of letters. So are we going to even have an approach of moving away from from naming and it like? Oh, come on, and then everything starts with O, for example, are we going to change that?
So we, within the existing policy already, we have that flexibility to do that. We did that with the Lakeview Business District. We, I think, we have the ability now to name it not necessarily after L's. All the streets, but we can follow a different theme. So if we wanted to name it after. I don't know, birds in and around the Big Lake area to honor the natural environment, we could do so. So we do have that ability within the policy already to do that. And I would expect, and based upon your insightful. Analyzing of our existing process that we're going to end up needing to do something in that vein. That we're not going to be able to have the neighborhood of Oakmont and then every name named after, starting with an O. Right now, I think we're even struggling to get enough ease for the Aaron ridges. So it it's something that we will be doing, but the policy actually already enables us to do that. So what I would expect through this process is based upon some of the feedback that we received from the public regarding. Maybe there are opportunities for us to name after. Our pastor history or to celebrate our history that's pre Father Lakom. That there may be some opportunities to have a neighborhood designed and named in that way as well. So there's, there's a lot that we can do, but yes, I think we're going to run out of the abilities to to name as we currently do.
I think maybe the policy should just say that we we try to find a theme, even if that's spelled out, because I like that. Whether it's flowers, birds, woodland animals, I don't know, something like that, just theme a neighborhood.
Yeah, and that and that policy is it is, it's already enabled through the policy, yeah, through themes.
Yeah, I think when we run out of or letters, maybe we can start naming like ZZ Top, like go to the double letters. Yeah. Question, in terms of starting with Grandin, I totally understand that. But I assume this is going to be a citywide holistic look. And one of the challenges, we have a lot of city names like La Rose, La Belle, Demeray. Even my wife's maiden name Delorme is controversial in some parts of. Um, even my wife's maiden name, Delorme, is controversial in some parts of, of New Brunswick. And, uh, so, uh, we're gonna take a holistic view of the whole city. But how, how do we find the balance of what is here and in our, our community versus, like I said, a challenge in New Brunswick?
Thanks for the question, Counsel Kilik. I'll start, and I'm sure lots, folks will have lots of different valuable contributions to make. I, I think that's why we really want to focus, so it is going to be extremely holistic. This is going out to all members of the community, but we're also explicitly targeting Grandin because we know that based on previous calls for renaming, there's that likelihood. So every resident of St. Albert is going to have multiple opportunities to participate, should they so choose. Um, in terms of sort of handling the complexities, the, the, one of the outputs of this project is not going to be coming to council with a very long list of, okay, this is all the, you know, all the names we, we think you need to reconsider. We are going to be able to gather some of that information and we'll have it available to council and available to us. But at the end of the day, what we hope to present to council with, um, you know, in the new year, with this proposed naming policy will be the all-important piece of the process. So again, a lot of these caveats or a lot of these conditions are already in place, but we haven't necessarily provided council with a really tactical way to evaluate when they do have calls for renaming. And so that's one of the, and that, that we can base on sort of the values of community and the different, um, sort of perspectives of residents and what's important to them, and that's what we want to bring forward.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's gonna be tough.
So there'll be a process for a resident that's living on Burnham Avenue to, if they want to change Burnham for whatever reason, they, there would be a process, much like when we have the, the parking permit things, right? You have to get 60% of your neighbors to sign it, whatever. So that, that will be laid out in the policy?
Well, we don't want to presuppose what it will look like, but we do hope to have exactly something like that that will identify. So for example, who the ultimate decision-making body will be. For all we know, community might come back to us and say, you should have a committee to decide that. Or they might come back and say, it should be council. Or they might come back and say, it should be Cindy DeBruin, which I will politely refuse. Um, but so, you know, at the end of the day, we don't want to presuppose anything, but we are gonna ask some very targeted questions to help us at least begin to formulate what that process is. So is it 60%? Is it 40%? Is it, you know, X number of, of, is it, is it community-based when it's looking at renaming, um, a residential street? Or if it's a commuter street, does it need a different requirement? We're gonna get into all of that information by gathering the, the resident input.
Wow. Any more questions, guys? Natalie, do you have any questions?
No, this is fantastic. I'm really pleased. Thank you.
This is what you had in mind when you made the motion?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, Cindy, I see your hands flying up. So I actually honestly, right now, it's just a timeline and a process. So let us know how we can participate with open houses in our calendars kind of thing. And, uh, we'll push stuff out on social media, whatever you need.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And, uh, a lot of the dates are starting to fill your calendar already. You're welcome at all of them. And, uh, we look forward to engaging in this process with you. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Bye.
All right, do we need to make a motion on that?
There's no motion here.
Yeah, to receive this information, wants to do it?
I don't.
Okay, she is all over that one. The presentation titled municipal naming. Of the vote.
Do it this way.
Okay, and now the all, not that that wasn't important, they're all important, but the heavier of the two topics. Diana, you leading us through this?
I am.
Can I just ask, is there any, uh, public online?
It's a public new.
Yeah, no, I just wondered if there was public online.
You can't do it on counter.
On YouTube.
Okay, that's good.
Do you get a wave? You, you're just analytics.
I know, I just wondered.
It says 24 people are watching right now, but I, I would bet that's mostly staff.
There is a good portion of staff.
Maybe, maybe the exact.
Oh, that's good.
But if it goes on YouTube, anyone can watch it later. That's what I like about that. Okay, get done. Whenever you're ready.
Bill's gonna just do some.
Should we tee it up, uh, your worship? That's all right. And then Diane will, will take the reins and, and we'll get.
Ball or T-ball?
Um, I, I would say pickleball, but I don't.
I don't think you tee up a pickleball.
No, I would have.
Oh, yeah.
I'll have an Alaska.
Your worship council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I, I think this is a follow-on, obviously, to the last discussion, um, in public this time. Uh, to take, uh, I think the broad understanding of the scope of the challenge and narrow it down into tangible elements, uh, that you, uh, can choose to exercise to mitigate a potential tax increase. Um, so what we are hoping is administration to get out of this today, uh, is again on the record, shared understanding of the challenges of municipal, uh, financing, in particular, the challenge facing St. Albert this year, which mirrors, um, most communities across countries, certainly in the region. And we are looking at an 8.2% tax increase to maintain the current level service standards levels. That is a 1% increase. The last time we spoke, when we were casting 7.2, most other communities are coming in around the 7% to 9%, 8% mark, so we are, are mirrored there.
Our current approved 10% last year.
So not insignificant.
Nope.
Um, so again, uh, we'll, we'll walk through this, um, the, 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 the concept here is to be interactive. Diane will have a spreadsheet, uh, with, with all the mechanisms. We've not left anything off. Um, so everything is available in play. And ultimately, what we're hoping to get out is an understanding of council's willingness to go some places or not go other places based on your ability to work the numbers, uh, to achieve a desired end state. And we're gonna see essentially three courses of action to start, right? And we look at 3, 4, and 5%, um, and what those could look like. Those are not, uh, administrative recommendations. Those are simply, uh, uh, levers that we opted to pull to get to those, those, uh, particular targets, but they could ultimately go anywhere. Last point I would make is there's really two parts to this discussion I would offer. The first is 2023, so it's budget, uh, this fall in preparation for next year. Um, but as you've seen, the forecasts are equally, um, challenging as we look out into the 2024, 2025 timeframe. Given the time and space between now and 2023, the ability to make significant, significant structural decisions, our service delivery decisions are fairly limited. Um, so I guess what I would quantify it as is, is we're buying space in 2023 in order to, uh, to make very heavy decisions in 2024, 2025, if council so chooses to go there. Uh, and so we will conclude, um, the agenda today, once you finish your deliberations of 2023, with a proposed outline on discussions through the fall and to the spring, looking into 2024, 2025.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, so, uh, St. Albert, uh, tax increases over the last 10 years have been below the level of inflation. If we were providing the exact same levels of service as we were 10, 10 years ago, this alone would be problematic. Adding to the issue are the following things. So the city's population has grown, um, by approximately 13, little 13% during that timeframe. And so that means there's more roads to repair and clear, more turf and trails to maintain, more traffic signals, more recreation and culture programming, increased transit routes, uh, and the list goes on. Uh, we've added new services or requirements, um, throughout those years as well. Um, you know, we've added some resources into indigenous relations, uh, intergovernmental operations. Uh, we've added dog parks, we've added disc golf, traffic calming programs. We've had a real growth in our, in our need for disability management. Um, you know, environmental compliance, the rules cut and keep changing, and there's more expectations, um, you know, on reporting and, and compliance pieces. Um, just very recently, we added freeways as, as a brand-new service level to the community. Um, our need for digital communications and social media support, of course, is, is probably from 10 years ago. Um, you know, we've, we've, we're now included, uh, as members in Edmonton Global and, and EMRB. So those are just some of the new things that have kind of happened. And then that's not, definitely not an inclusive list. It was just, uh, sort of some samples. We've also been facing provincial downloads, um, in the last years. So a couple of years ago, as part of the provincial budget, um, there were some changes to the regulations around fine revenues. So, um, through some changes that the provincial government made, we started getting less, a lesser percentage of, of the fines that were issued. And that was, that was actually a pretty significant, uh, impact to our community.
Was that one?
The fine revenues.
How much was it? Do you remember?
Oh, God, I can't, I, yeah, it was, no, it was sort of, we went, went from, we used to get 70% and the province got 30, and now we get 60 and they get 40. I can't remember what the exact numbers were, but it came out to almost $700,000.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, it was 600 and some thousand.
I remember it was hidden in the budget.
It was, yeah, definitely, yeah, deep, deep down. It took us a little while to find it, so, but that was a pretty big impact. Um, they've made some changes to our grants in lieu of taxes. Um, that didn't have a significant impact on St. Albert, had some huge impacts in some communities, but there was, was still some impacts. Um, and of course, lots of discussion on the, um, the move to the local government fiscal framework from the MSI model. Um, we know that we're likely going to be getting somewhere around 25% less annually than, than we've been traditionally receiving to support our infrastructure. Um, lots of changes in the volume of purchase services. So, um, with new facilities, streetlights, city vehicles, means we're using more gas, electricity, and diesel, on top of the fact that the cost for those companies has gone up. So it's both a volume and a, and a price impact. Um, required increases to infrastructure investments. Um, so changes to contributions to capital from the tax levy. So part of that is the, is the 1.5 RMR that, that we've been committing to do. Use and the cost of debt, so principal and interest payments that are due in the year. Um, you know, we, we've started to utilize our, our utilized debt a little bit more than we have in the past, you know, which I said is, is, is a good thing. And we're working, we're still working on those modifications potentially to the debt policy. But we're using it more, and also, as you know, based on some changes in the provincial government, the cost of that debt is now going up. And in general, um, interest rates are going up across the country, and that's something that's completely out of our control. Um, permanent and temporary impacts to non-tax revenue. So we're still reeling from the impacts, um, of the pandemic. We're still not back up to our, um, pre-pandemic transit ridership revenues. Um, our rec revenues aren't, aren't back up to pre-pandemic level, so we're being impacted by that as well. Um, and then the use of reserve dollars to offset impacts. And we'll talk about that, you know, as we get into some of the options. But, you know, using reserve dollars, you're basically using your savings account to fund ongoing services. And it has a, you know, it has a future year impact, so we'll, we'll talk about that. So how have we managed to overcome the financial realities of our environment and not only continue to provide consistent services, but added services in the community? So it's a well-known fact that municipal revenues, whether property taxes or other revenues, that are generated from a residential property are inadequate to pay for the repair, maintain, or replacement of the infrastructure and the high level of services and amenities that are expected by the residents. While non-residential properties typically can pay for themselves and contribute financially to the community, in St. Albert, our split between residential and non-residential doesn't fill that gap. So again, we pose the question of how do we continue to provide existing and new services when our access to new revenues, property taxes, is below basic inflation? So we've invested significant time and effort, especially in the last five to seven years, pursuing continuous improvement and efficiency initiatives and combing through our budgets to ensure there is no waste or excess. We've executed corporate reorganizations. We continue to ask our staff to take on more and more, which is putting pressure on our workforce. These types of opportunities have effectively been exhausted and can no longer be relied upon to mitigate tax increases. As we've been predicting and communicating with council over the past, uh, several years, um, we've sort of kicked the can down the road about as far as we can, and now we're facing the reality of those decisions. So as was presented to council originally in public on May 2nd, 2022, our initial high-level forecast, in order to maintain council-approved service levels and deliver on council-approved capital projects, the city was estimating the requirement of an average 7.2% tax increase for 2023. Um, since that time, we've continued to assess and build our detailed budgets. Um, and continuing to assess the current financial environment. And we were now confirming an estimated increase closer to 8.2%. For 2023, this would equate to approximately $300, $312, um, per year, or $26 a month increase to taxes for an average household valued at $450,000. So this includes only maintaining the services we provide today and does not include any new things that council may add as a result of your strategic priorities or other emergent items. It's understood that residents and businesses are facing high levels of inflation in their everyday lives, and council wants to lessen the burden of those tax increases. With the state of inflation, a typical household is having to make hard choices around where to spend their limited resources and are critically assessing the wants versus needs. With the price of groceries escalating, people may have to make the decision to cancel their monthly movie night. With gas prices at all-time highs, um, families may have to give up their summer, summer family road trip. While there's always the option to utilize their savings in the short term, eventually, these decisions need to be made. Putting these decisions off until the bank account is empty presents great risk for the future. Our city is in the exact same position as the average family. If we do not have the ability to generate an additional 8.2% in property tax revenues, we need to spend less. In order to spend less, we need to do less. Over the last several years, we have benefited from the strategic use of the provincial MOC funding, which is the municipal operating support transfer, um, that was provided by the province of Alberta to all municipalities to help, um, offset some of the impacts of COVID. Um, and we've been able to stagger and utilize, uh, this funding to offset tax increases without impacting services. Going back to the previous example of a household, we are effectively using our savings account to pay for ongoing services that we have no future, um, strategy to fund. So many years ago, council adopted the Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles policy. There are many principles embedded in the policy that ensure fiscal responsibility and sustainability. Um, on May, uh, 2nd, council directed administration to propose a 23 budget that reflected a tax increase in the range of 3% to 5%. One of the challenges facing administration is that there are components within this council policy that make the direction challenging. Council will have several financial levers available to them, each with their own implications and risks. However, these are under the authority of council to debate. So some of the principles, um, from the policy that, that support, uh, sustainability and responsibility within the, within the corporation. So one of them says budgets will be developed in a consistent and planned manner and take into consideration the impact on future years and the city's ability to fund those impacts. So that's, that's a pretty important principle. Um, the approved operating and capital budget serve as the financial plan, and they provide administration with the resources necessary to accomplish council strategic direction and council-approved service levels. Um, the use of reserves is planned and should not be considered an alternate funding source in place of good financial practice. One-time revenues and surplus should not be relied upon to fund ongoing expenditures as this can result in expenditure obligations, um, that may not have adequate funds for future years. Um, and as well, of course, council endorsed a financial plan to address the infrastructure deficit in relation to our existing assets. So this policy requires the budget equivalent to a 1.5% tax increase annually to meet this objective.
He's drinking too much water.
So other than a recommendation around reserve funding, administration, um, has no authority by policy to impact the allocation of new assessment growth revenue. The 1.5% contribution to RMR, uh, increases to, um, electrical franchise fees, changes to service levels, as these are all governed by council policy. While council maintains the right or ability to change or temporarily suspend sections of the policy, administration does not. While council may consider pulling the first, um, three or four levers, it's important to understand that these are temporary measures, sorry, the first three, I should say. Um. So we'll soon, soon run out of reserve funding. Our infrastructure deficit needs to be dealt with, and an organization cannot sustain services without addition, the addition of resources. An increase to the franchise fee, however, would be a sustainable and growing revenue source. Using, using the temporary levers is a decision to continue kicking the can down the road, which invariably will have longer-term consequences. So municipal finance is a zero-sum game. Revenues must equal expenses. When costs go up, such as what we are experiencing with record-high inflation, there must be new revenues to offset. There are limited revenue tools available to municipalities, with the traditional ones being property taxes, fees, fines, and franchise fees. The only way council can meaningfully, meaningfully impact the tax increase and taxes in general is through the management of service levels. Um, so again, on May 2nd, council directed administration to develop a budget in the range of 3% to 5%. The amount shown on the screen are the levels that we need to reduce our expense budget to achieve this. These amounts are not insignificant. As you can see, a tax increase in the range of 3% to 5% requires mitigating reductions between $4 million and $6.3 million. As was mentioned earlier, while there may be financial levers council can choose to pull in the short term, reserves, RMR, and assessment growth, these are either one-time diminishing benefits, if we're talking about reserves, or short-term mitigation strategies when talking about RMR or assessment growth. And each of these can have negative impacts on the future. The only way to permanently impact the tax increase is to eliminate services or reduce service levels. Over the last couple of budget cycles, council was presented with multiple service level reduction options. Administration presented mostly items that were not felt to have a significant impact on residents. Council approved very few of these adjustments to move forward. These were small adjustments that would have ultimately had very little impact on the taxes anyways. Given the numbers above, council will be looking at significant and impactful service level reductions for the community. Small tweaks to service levels, such as we did to the changing of the mowing cycle, will not be adequate to achieve these kinds of results. We would likely be looking at eliminating entire services, entire events and entire facilities in order to achieve these kind of numbers. The other challenge in learning that administration has gained over the last couple of years is that it takes significant amount of time and resources to fully understand. The unintended consequences and interconnected activities of services. Consider the resources, both time and money, that it took to resolve the fire dispatch opportunity. Which yielded us three hundred and forty thousand dollars in annual savings, which is only a small percentage of what it would take to get to the six point three million dollar reduction above. Given the complexity of analyzing the impacts of significant service level reductions. It would be difficult, if not impossible, to invoke a meaningful service change for the twenty-three budget. The only options for twenty-three would be to eliminate completely self-contained service or event. Council would need to identify commitment to this sooner rather than later.
Diane, just before we move on, could you remind me in in terms of the six point three million, what what's our baseline? Budget? Six hundred or six hundred?
So that's what it would take to get from an eight point two tax percent increase down to a three percent?
Yeah.
Is we'd have to cut out six million dollars from our budget.
Right, and and what what's our what's our base?
Oh, like what's the bench budget? Oh, my goodness. I'm going to I'm going to throw that out to Ann, I think, because on line I'll get her to look that up and and give you.
Because it's important to know what, you know, if we're talking six hundred million or?
It's like a hundred and sixty, I was going to say somewhere around a hundred and sixty million.
Yeah, sixty million.
But our requisition is only a little over a hundred, right?
Yeah, 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 just over a hundred. That's the total expense budget, the amount we collect from, because part of it is collected through fees and other other components, non-tax revenues. So the actual tax requirement is less than that.
So the tax requirement is roughly a hundred million out of the?
A hundred and eighteen? For remembering numbers.
Okay, let's just.
The hundred and sixteen.
Well, that's just operating.
You also have to remember too that this is not adding anything to the budget. That's six point three, so adding other projects is the trade-off.
Yeah, no, it's just really good to have.
Provide some context, some extra context, for sure.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so given the complexities of service level reductions for two thousand and twenty-three, council has the following options. So option one is to approve the proposed budget and maintain service levels.
Now these are a hundred and seventeen, five, so we've said a hundred and eighteen?
Yeah, I said.
I had to do that in there.
Use the short-term levers to the extent possible to mitigate twenty-three increases. As we mentioned before, the use of these strategies deters the issue at best and could exacerbate the issue in the future. Number three is just a little bit of a tweak on the first one, so again, use the short-term levers, as we mentioned, you know, it's buying us time and space. To hopefully do the analysis that we need to do and make the decisions that we need to make with some thought going into it. But we need a plan of how we're going to get there, we can't just stop after we, you know, get through the twenty-three budget, we can't just stop the conversation and be back in the same seats. Next year, having the same conversation, we want to make sure we continue that conversation. And then, you know, the fourth option, and again, this isn't for sort of the immediate budget even the next three years, but again, it should be be looking at longer-term growth strategies. Do we need to consider whether we can continue to maintain the level of infrastructure in new neighborhoods that we've historically developed? You know, there's lots of other longer-term things that we potentially could look at and they have a long-term effect, future operating capital budgets. I mean, some of the some of the operating expenses we have today are based on decisions that were probably made thirty and forty years ago. In terms of what we build and how we build and all that kind of stuff, so. Those are the, that's the long, long term, but we have to keep that in mind as well. So there's three financial levers available to council that can reduce the twenty-three budget. However, each of them comes with risks and longer-term consequences that council must be aware of. The current uncommitted balance in the stabilization reserve is about eight point three million, but that includes three point nine million dollars remaining from the. From the most funding from the province. So administration would recommend, you know, using the most funding, you know, over the next two to three years. To offset the tax rate while we're actively assessing service level changes. This is using one-time money to fund ongoing services and it can't be relied upon in the future. You know, if we were to use like a third of this funding in twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five. You know, when we come to the next year's budget, that means there's a there's a space that has to be backfilled with either new revenues or or service level cuts. It's like I said, it buys you time, but it doesn't ultimately solve the decision or solve the problem. So that being said, like I said, it can buy us some time to properly assess our options. It's not recommended that the non-most component that remains in the stabilization fund be used to offset taxes. The balance in that fund is getting pretty tight, it's getting low. It's a well-used fund by council and I think, you know, in the future, especially in the next couple of years, we're going to have to be really careful. About what we approved to come out of that fund in terms of little projects and little things that we've traditionally used it for, we're going to have to be careful. Because one of one of the biggest issues we have with the stabilization fund is it actually has no funding source, right? So the only way that that fund gets replenished is through year-end surpluses. And because we've been tightening our budgets so much over the last few years, like our risk of not having those big surpluses. Is, you know, it's becoming real and we may not be able to replenish that fund, so. That's just something to consider. So on to the second one, assessment growth by policy allows fifty-five percent of the estimated growth to go toward operating business cases. Based on estimated assessment growth for twenty-three, this equates to about one point one million, or yeah, one point one million. And so keep in mind too that the business cases that that we utilize out of that funding is to help with the growth, right? Like as new neighborhoods come on, like we mentioned, they got more cross to cut, there's more. You know, as we have more vendors, there's more accounts payable invoices to pay. As we grow, we have more employees, we have more payroll to do, so it's it's just to help manage that that kind of growth.
And how many dollars in growth projects do you have requested right now?
It was over three million. Originally it was eight, I think some people scaled it back. When we went to do the prioritization efforts, it was just under four billion and prioritized much less than that.
Yeah, so it's a decision, certainly it is. The need certainly outpace even the maximum value that we have, because we haven't utilized the assessment growth in the last couple of years. We've been kind of giving that back to the tax rate and and kind of fumbled along, but the the capacity issues are getting to the point where we we can't kind of continue like that, certainly for. We couldn't give out the whole amount back this year because there's some places.
Option to take that from fifty-five percent to sixty. Either one time or through policy or seventy-five or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we just made some changes to that assessment policy as well, so that a portion of that assessment growth is going towards that one point five percent RMR.
Right.
As well, so we did did just make changes. Again, policies can always be amended either temporarily by council or permanent policy changes can be made, but we just go by, you know, what's in council policy as of today. Yeah, so over the last several years, administration has moved forward with very few business cases, especially those that address some significant capacity issues. And while this is another lever for council to pull, it can't be considered a long-term solution and will continue to place significant stress on the corporation. To be able to meet the service level expectations with growing geographical and population base. Not addressing our capacity gaps in some areas will start to show in our ability to attract and retain high-quality employees. And as I mentioned, it would likely be impossible for administration to sort of offer up the entire one point one million this year, but maybe a small portion of it could be considered for sure. Several years ago, council made a bold decision to implement a tax strategy to address our forecasted RMR infrastructure deficit. By increasing the tax requirement by the equivalent of one point five percent each year for twenty years. Well, it's easy to say we'll just skip it this year, eliminating this contribution in twenty-three only. Has a minimum cumulative effect of thirty-five to forty million dollars over that twenty-year timeframe. So there's one additional lever available to council which would produce a permanent impact to the tax requirement. That could be implemented for twenty-three budget and that would be an increase to the electrical franchise fee. Through our last meeting, you know, we were asked to throw it on the table, so we're we're throwing it on the table. And you can kind of see on there what kind of revenue that that generates. The one. Another one of the positive things about the franchise fee is not only is it permanent, but it's growing. So as the city grows and you have more businesses and more residents or whatever, that that revenue base continues to grow with the city.
Not suggesting the gas franchise fee, though?
Um, we have limitations on the gas franchise fee and if we want to have a more discussion about that, we'll, we're actually, I have David online, but we'll actually have to go on camera if we want to have a discussion about. About the gas, but we have some limitations on that piece.
What are, Diane, can I ask a question? I mean, it would be a lever, but I mean, what about selling assets like land or something like that? Is that, how does that get transferred back in or is there, is that, is that something?
The challenge with selling assets is it's one-time money.
Yeah.
So if you were using it, yeah, well, I mean, you could use it towards new capital projects. But if you were using it for operating, again, it's no different than using our existing reserve funds, it's one-time money and eventually you have to have ongoing money to be able to fund it. So that's the, that's one of the challenges.
But it's, I I'm only talking about short-term lever, like potentially levers, right? If we sold, I'm, you know, like I don't, I'm not identifying building, let's say we we sold some of our land, we sold a building, something like that. I mean, I don't want to sell a building because then if we got to occupy, if there's occupancy in there, you got to find a place for it. But I know we have land, but.
And we have a policy that we sell land and it goes into a land reserve.
Yeah, yeah.
To buy more land.
Yeah, so I'm, but that's what I'm saying, so is there, is there a way to access that if if we sold land? And I realize we don't have a lot.
Finding the transactions were done in time for the budget to be approved, the issue is is to implicate the tax increase. On a one-shot deal, the sale would have to be closed if the money received.
Yeah.
It's certainly being investigated throughout the year, but then it would be in-year reception of funds as opposed to the tax increase, which would take place.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, even if we use short-term levers this time, you bought, sold some land, you apply it to next, you know, I I realize it's short-term, short-term, but.
I was going to say it's just another short term.
Yeah.
But that would also be one of the discussions I would submit as we look, you know, if you're, depending on where your decisions are for two thousand and twenty-three. That would absolutely be part of the discussions as we looked out years about potentially divesting holdings. To look at that.
Well, it'd be interesting discussion to have. Our current electrical franchise fee, ten percent, right?
Yep.
We still have a listing of all of what the region has in terms of franchise fees and what they pay?
I do, I don't have a list of the whole province, but I did kind of get a list, I don't, if you want to get a sense, like Airdrie's at the full twenty percent. Like I can tell you the ones that are kind of are above where we are. Yeah, so Airdrie's at twenty, Camrose is at fifteen, Camrose at twelve, Chestamere's at eleven point five, Devon's at thirteen. Le Duke's at sixteen, Sprisgrove and Stony Plain are both at twenty, Westlock's at fourteen point seven five and Wataasquins at thirteen point eight. So those are all kind of municipalities that are higher than where we are right now.
I have a comment, like, you know, you, it was mentioned that you could enter into a franchise fee increase and then you could, you know, take it off later, which never usually happens, right? I mean, once it's there, you're kind of stuck with it. And my concern is, is if we're, you know, raising taxes, adding fees or we're essentially taxing the public in a different way. We're never looking at value in our services, right? Because not tackling them unless you have to. For example, you're saying the family has to, you know, give up that night out, well, maybe the night out is not, you know, contributing to global N E R B. Maybe the traffic calming is not doing that road trip, like there's a lot of services that I don't see any value in as a taxpayer or haven't seen any value in. So I mean, I don't, I believe that those services are the ones that we have to tackle, not the ones that you say don't make that, you know, that you mentioned that are just a small amount that everybody wants anyhow. We're not getting to the ones that are, you know, who not want for the people.
And that's exactly where the next part of this conversation needs to go, like once we get through twenty-three, we need to figure out how are we going to assess our service levels. You know, to understand which ones maybe don't have as high a value to the community. You know, our hope is to, I think in general, part you would have read, you know, we're hoping to improve priority-based budgeting. You know, allocation, because that gives a real good sense of of where those fall in terms of council, council's goals and and all of that thing to, so that we can focus on maybe some of those lower ones. And again, sometimes it's about service levels as well, like, you know, you can, it's a difference, you can take a family road trip. To Newfoundland or you can take a family road trip to Le Duke. But you're significantly changing the trip, right? But, you know, to get to the some of the big numbers that we're looking at, it would be pretty significant reductions in service levels, but there's there's absolutely opportunity. And what we need is time and space to work together to figure out what should we look at, right? Because the interesting thing is we can't look at everything, right? Like there's just, you know, a lot of those things, you know, we might, we might easily say, oh, we could just get rid of traffic calming, right? But there could be implications to that that we haven't thought through, right? And so we just want to make sure that we're making the right decision before we make the decision.
Pieces of equipment could be a million dollars too, you know, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of things that I feel like we don't ever address.
Right, but keep in mind your equipment is more on the capital side, right? So that isn't impacting your, that like not buying those two pieces of equipment isn't going to impact your.
I mean, that was just an example, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's big things that cost a lot of money, no matter where it comes from, it still comes from the tax dollars at the end of the day.
Well, not all of it does, right? Because we do have a lot of grants for our capital as well. We do have some of our, absolutely some of our capital money coming in 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 the spreadsheet, we're at the interactive spreadsheet, we've got a couple of. Levers that we'll talk, I don't want to get into them right now because I need to explain them before I kind of throw them up on the screen, but. And I just wanted to to kind of just, maybe you misunderstood what I said too about franchise fees. I never said that that would be something that we would do for now and then reduce later, because you're absolutely right, if we do that, that will very likely be there forever, we'd probably never reduce it. Unless we had a very compelling reason to, yeah.
Diane, I'm kind of always felt that franchise fees is, we're still taking money out of the left-hand pocket. And we're taking taxes out of the right-hand pocket, but the pockets are still the same resident, right? Like, is there really a?
But they're not equal.
They're not equal.
They're not equal, so you'll pay, you'll save more taxes and you'll pay in franchise fees.
Yeah, so.
Really good report when we talked about this in two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah.
That highlighted.
Maybe I need to see that, because I I I'm admitting I don't understand that. I always thought it was like a one-to-one correlation, but if it's not.
They're going to collect money from schools and the hospitals and those are better paying taxes.
Taxes.
Franchise fees from them, but you don't get taxes from them, so you take that franchise fees and it saves the taxpayer money.
So it goes out to all of the, so that's the difference? Or or maybe I could just see that.
Yeah, well, and what I was, what I was thinking is if if this conversation about franchise fees is going to continue and there's appetite for us to at least look at it. Then I think it's, it would be prudent for us to do kind of a re-education and, you know, updates and all this and all of that. I just didn't want to put all that work in now until we kind of.
I I'm just saying I don't, I I don't understand it.
This is a competitive advantage of our low franchise.
Yeah.
Mike, I don't know, do you hear? When businesses are coming, if our franchise fees makes a difference in their decision-making?
I have not heard that directly, but I can't say that it's, it wouldn't be something they would consider.
Especially the big electrical, right? I think when we brought the franchise fees, the intention was always to keep us competitive in the region. It should have those numbers.
But but if if there is that old report that myself, maybe Shelley could.
Absolutely, I'll find that.
Members of council would would help. Yeah, that would be great.
Because I believe we had several conversations, you know, kind of leading up to when we actually made the decision, I think there were several conversations over, you know, six to eight months. And a few presentations, so I'll certainly dig those out.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and we could certainly, if it was something that we were, you know, potentially even considering. I can, we can certainly look at updating the analysis and so that we have the most information, but I I will almost guarantee that the analysis will still hold true even with even with new members.
Okay.
Just understanding how franchise fees works, the analysis should remain true. Okay, this is the last slide, actually, so, yeah, so immediately following this presentation, we're going to have the opportunity to utilize an interactive tool. To be able to see the results of potential decisions on the twenty-three tax increase, kind of in real time. Municipal finance is complicated, it's going to be a challenging exercise to be able to achieve zero-sum adjustments. If council wants to eliminate or reduce the use of one or more of the available options, there has to be a corresponding increase in another category. If there's a desire to target a tax increase under the forecasted point two percent. So that's the the end of the presentation. So that's the, uh, the end of the presentation. Stop sharing. Oh, shit. I don't know. I don't know if you wanted to have a break for it all before.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Yeah. It's been an hour and a bit. Let's take a little bio break. Good idea.
It's good. Challenge was to say single truck or double truck, how much double? Where you can pass somebody high and you can pass somebody. And if it's single, there's no way. I mean, it's like this wide and it's not traffic. So you could, if it was, perhaps you just hit people. Anyway.
Where?
You just love it.
No, it's a great park. It's more of a.
But pretty.
Okay. Everyone's, everyone wants to spend. Everyone wants us to spend money, Diane. Hey, um, so you want to go through this or where are we at?
Well, I'm just going to actually just first, uh, turn it over to Ann. She was just going to answer the question about the total, uh, tax base or the total expense budget. We came up with the tax requirement, but Ann's, go ahead, Ann.
Wes said 160.
You're on mute.
Right.
So you should have responded to Counselor Hill's question on the tax base. I put it in the chat. But I just wanted to give a perspective. So.
So, read it over.
So the 220 budget, the baseline was 177.1 million in expenses and 59.6 million in revenues. So that resulted in a 117.5 million tax levy. That's just on the municipal side. So if we included utilities, that would be 222 million in expenses and 104.5 in revenue. So just keep in mind that it's year over year increase. So that is our base comparator, the 222 base. So we just wanted to provide that baseline.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Old number, 160.
It was close.
177.
Well, at least. All right. So, um, so before I put this up on the screen, uh, for all our millions of viewers, um, I just wanted to kind of, to provide kind of some context as we're kind of going through it. So as, uh, as, uh, Mr. Fletcher had mentioned, I would not consider any of these recommendations from administration. Um, these are the items that we could come up with, that we could implement for the 23 budget. Um, so we talked about in, in our last meeting that doing significant service level adjustments, like we wouldn't have time to even implement it, um, before to, to be able to affect the 23 budget. So we looked at the things that we could use, again, some of them. So if we go through the different categories. So obviously, um, the most funding, it's one time, it's only one year relief. Kind of just pushes it down the road, buys us some time. Um, the RMR levy, uh, to eliminate, I'm calling that a temporary, uh, um, lever. So it's only one year relief and, uh, we'd have to re, you know what I mean? It would have to be reconsidered every year. And as I mentioned before, it has a long-term implication on our ability to, uh, maintain our infrastructure. Uh, assessment growth, business cases, which was one of the levers we talked about. Anything that we put towards the taxes out of that 55% or the one, it would be a permanent, um, adjustment to the tax base. So it's not like it comes back the following year. It's permanent tax money. But it does significantly reduce our ability to address, um, capacity issues if we, if we pull any of that money. Um, as we talked about, the electric franchise fee would be a permanent adjustment. Um, and it, it is, it's ongoing funding and it's a growing revenue source.
Thanks. Were, were you going to share this to the screen and like?
I am. I just wanted to kind of give some context before I kind of put it up and we start looking at numbers.
And does Counselor Jolly have it?
I did, I did, uh, email a, a copy of this. Yes. Um, then the other area that we came, came up with was grants, right? So this, this is money that we provide to other organizations in the community to, to provide service. Um, we, we sort of left nothing off the table. We said, let's put grants on the table for, for discussion. We've listed out all of the grants that we, that we currently, um, give in no particular order or no. And like, like we said, it's not necessarily a, an administrative recommendation, but it is one of the things that we could, we could actually action, um, some components of it for the, for the 23 budget. Um, there's an opportunity, um, for the public art transfer, which is now that's, that's a lever that we've actually have pulled in the last two years. We haven't, we haven't done a, um, contribution to the public art reserve for the last two years. So this would be about doing it again and whether it's temporary or permanent, that would be a council decision. Um, and then there's, there is a component that we've thrown on the table around, um, part of our tax levy towards capital. And this is where I wanted to give a little bit of context. Um, or some of our pay as you go money, um, but specifically on the growth side. So pay as you go right now, some of our money still goes towards RMR, right? Like as we have mentioned, we don't have, we don't have enough from our tax levy to pay for all of our RMR. So we're utilizing grants, we're utilizing lots of things. Eventually we want to make sure our tax levy, the intent is that our tax levy covers all of our RMR, um, and that then the grants can be used for growth projects. So this would be about.
Policy? Or is that just something that we're thinking about? I mean, I totally agree with you, but.
Well, that was sort of the whole comp, um, concept of the whole, um, RMR infrastructure deficit and putting in the 1.5%. Is that to be, really to be sustainable, we shouldn't, in a perfect world, we should not have to rely on grants from other levels of governments in order to maintain our own infrastructure, like existing infrastructure. Um, we will always use grants, like we will, we always have to, um, it, it's interesting with our funding because we will always use grants to pay for RMR, like, um, because a lot of times grants, they have matching components and sometimes the grants are very restrictive. It has to be over a certain dollar value and it has to be so utilize them. But what we're saying is we should be collecting enough from our tax base that if all the grants went away, we could stop doing growth projects and we could fully pay out of our bank account for all our, our RMR needs. Right? So what I'm saying on this last one is that there's a component of our money from our tax base that we use towards growth projects. So we could make the decision that we're going to honestly do less growth projects to help get through this. And we would take less from the tax base and then we would do less growth projects.
But we don't even have enough money for. Like we're capital, we're, this is operating, but our capital side's pretty stressed as well, right?
It, it is. So it would mean doing way less projects, right? Like I'm certainly, that's what it means. And the only, um, thing that I do want to say is that, you know, we've got like on this list, I'm talking about this pay as you go, the growth component. And I'm talking about the 1.5% RMR. We can't do both. It's, it's sort of one or the other, um, or neither or, you know, but we can't really do both. That would put us in a very precarious situation, um, for our capital assets. So that's, um, one piece. So I will start to share this now.
If we think of others to add to this list, are you open to that?
Absolutely.
And if we think of others that we absolutely never want you to consider, we'll let you know.
Yeah. That's, we are open to get out of this.
One of the ones I was thinking you guys might bring forward, and I'm glad to see it's not here, is Children's Festival, right? That, that's a one time in a bucket, like we talked about, but I never want to see that on this list. So love the children's festival. You know, it's something that's, you know, it makes in other who we are. So those kinds of things.
Guess a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, the EY recommendations that we've done to date, how much savings have we realized from those?
Oh, I'm trying to figure out, I don't know. Is Daria, is Daria on the line, I think? Um, I'm not sure that's a question we can necessarily answer today. I mean, obviously, obviously the, um, the 911 review was, came out of the, the EY recommendations as well. And while we haven't, um, captured those savings yet, the intent is that they're, they're a company, right? But we know it's going to take at least to implement, um, by the time we actually see those savings. But I would consider that achieved in the fact that it's been made. Um, Daria, do you have anything to add from that?
You know, unfortunately I can't give the exact amount. Um, as we mentioned before, a lot of the opportunities in that report require further, further analysis before we can even consider implementing. So, um, we did adjust some, uh, it resulted in some savings, but the bigger ones are still on the table and we're exploring them. One, we brought forward to council, 911 dispatch. We're coming to council with art and theater. Um, there is a library related one. So some of the big items are, um, still being explored and, uh, will be coming to council in the next year or so. And then all, there were a lot of transformative, uh, uh, opportunities, modernizing. Uh, we've made great progress on regional service delivery, especially related to some agreements with, uh, for the recreation, uh, services. So we have made progress, but it does take time to realize those benefits.
So what I would love to see is when the, at least, um, when the budget is presented every year, that it includes a component of what, what have we seen for realization for this year? And what are we projecting for realization for the following year? So if we've implemented it, but it's going to take place in 24, so at least we can see where those, these are kind of hidden savings right now, I would say. So if we were to expose us, that would be helpful. Um, so specific to the EY report that we've done for efficiencies.
Some of that information was provided to council, I believe, last month when we provided annual updates. So we can certainly resend that report to council to give you the most up to date information.
I'm just looking to like, when you present the budget in two months, like include that information in there. So I guess what I'm asking for, so that we know what we've already implemented and what we're also planning to consider. Or what we've, I guess, what we've implemented, what we've implemented, but hasn't taken effect yet, and then what we're considering.
Right.
Okay. It would be the three. Um, I feel like, um, anyway, this is guy that categorizes all his videos by movies I like, movies I don't like, and movies I haven't seen. So sort of the same way. Um, the other thing was that, so we're looking at a forecasted deficit this year, according to the second quarter report. Are we, are we thinking it's, we're actually, I know we come in low and we always come in a bit higher at the end. Are we still think we're going to be able to break even by? The other thing was that, so we're looking at a forecasted deficit this year, according to the second quarter report. Are we, are we thinking it's, we're actually, I know we come in low and we always come in a bit higher at the end. Are we still think we're gonna be able to break even by the end? So at least we're not gonna be.
Yes. I, I believe so. It's always hard at quarter two, right? Because, um, we have budgets that are intended to be spent later in the year. And at this point, people are, are always convinced that they're gonna spend all of that. Um, but think, but life happens, right? And then, you know, certain, certain things happen that, that activities don't happen that we expected to, and that's how we kind of end up in a surplus. So I, I fully believe we will at minimum break even. Um, this isn't the only time we've ever forecasted a deficit at Q two and we've, we've still always come in at a surplus. So I'm not terribly worried about it.
Yeah. This is a higher deficit than I've seen in the past. That's why. I was just like, oh, six hundred thousand is not small.
I think that the last time we did a Q two deficit, it was around three hundred or three fifty.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a little higher, but I'm still, honestly, I'm not that concerned about it. I, you know, I think by year end, we'll at minimum break even and, you know, hopefully have a small surplus that we can.
Okay.
Superficialization reserve.
Cause that's watching and they see the research part that we literally have an answer.
Yeah.
Um, the library audit, do we know what, if it's coming in next month or have we heard any updates of where they're at with that?
I don't think Cindy's on. Last time I met with the library, they said it was pretty, uh, it was on schedule.
Okay.
But we have not seen the results or heard any of the initial feedback on it. So I would anticipate that we would hear, um, on the original timeline, what it says.
Was their timeline to give it to us by September, October, or do we know? I don't know what their schedule is. Okay.
I don't know off the top.
Okay. Um, that's just trying to, you know, when we have that discussion going forward. Um, the other thing was the, this is a comment, you know, but the, the most money, we'll call it. The challenge I see with this, with this one time is we've already done this a couple of times and we just keep kicking this can down the road and it's just gonna come back to bite us. Um, what I'm wondering is how much more money do we require to get Lakeview serviced? Or close to serviced? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Look at the tax chart, buying these properties and building on them. How, how much more do we need to go?
Donnie on the line?
Seventy-two million dollars.
Yeah, it's just saying, well.
Seventy-two million to service, so.
Is that all? Okay. Uh, so seventy-two, so we, cause we've already spent some when we did the servicing to, uh, the rec lands.
Yeah.
And so is that seventy-two plus the rec lands or seventy-two?
No, that, that's, but it's gonna have to include like there's the levitable money coming in from developers and everything.
Right.
I think our contribution is either twenty-five or thirty-five, but Donnie, we will talk to that.
She popped on, but she popped off.
It was there.
Come back. There she is.
Sorry, my video was going up and down. Uh, the seventy-two million is pl- the plus or minus thirty-five percent contingency. That's a very high level estimate. This is for the liquid side of things, just for just getting all the services for the ultimate requirement that is required there, right? That doesn't include the community amenities site as well. That's a separate, uh, line item.
So what we've done so far, great. And to get the rest of it so that we could actually develop in that land, we need another seventy-two million dollars for the infrastructure. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's for the whole area of Lakewood, not just portions of it.
Okay.
And what percentage of that would be city land, Donnie? Like just high level, like thirty percent of it or?
I think it was forty. Let me pull up. I think I had the data reserved somewhere. So give me a minute.
Here comes Adrian.
All right. From the beach.
The, the entirety of, uh, Lakeview is about six hundred and fifty acres and the city owns about a hundred and.
Hundred and what?
Seventeen.
Hundred eighty, something like that.
Hundred eighty, oh.
Okay, so.
So Donnie, how much investment is required to start, uh, development in that area?
Is that the seventy-two?
No, we don't need all seventy-two. We can get started much less. But I don't, I don't have the data right in front of me just to prove how much we need. It depends on where you wanna expand. Right? If you get expansion closer to the project eight that we have completed, um, as part of the community amenities amendment, um, that would serve us spending much less than seventy-two right off the get-go.
So what I would be interested in having a discussion in the future is just how much we can go and where we can get that servicing. Because the reality is that we need more non-residential development period so that we can actually start off decreasing the tax rates in a proportion. And that's an obvious area that might be like, if I were to, if you were to say, where do you want to put this three point nine, I'd rather put that towards getting something that's gonna give us actual results as opposed to just simply delaying the pain. So, um, and seeing how fast that we could have that. So I would love to have that discussion in the future, sooner than later, to figure out if we have those choices and what the cost will be because we need to be looking at a larger picture here and not just a short term.
You're right. I mean, that's where, that's where your biggest bang for our butt comes is getting our non-residential up and getting our tax base up on that side. That's what's gonna, that's the long-term, one of the longer-term solutions to the problem, obviously. And it's still, that's a traditional municipal revenue source. It's just that it's, it's the non-res side versus the res. So absolutely. So I, I think the intent was we, we were kind of looking at, at, uh, you know, starting to have the, um, debt discussion with council on Lakeview, um, probably soonish. Um, to say, do we want to commit to moving, moving this forward? Because when you're talking seventy-two million dollars, we're gonna be looking at debt financing. Now granted, a good chunk of that, we will eventually collect back, um, as the developers develop. But there is a piece of it like that I was trying to say that will ultimately become
Right.
Ability to service the debt. But then obviously, the hope is that the taxes that are coming in from those non-residential properties and then help offset the, you know what I mean? Help offset taxes altogether. So it's, you know.
Right.
It's kind of a win-win, but it takes some time and there's a, you know, you have to invest upfront, um, to get those longer.
If you were to sell that piece of land, then it would just subtract from your total gain of sale off site.
Yeah, right. And there's, yeah, there's opportunities there. If we get sale proceeds from the land that can go towards servicing, and maybe we don't have to debt finance a portion of it or something like, there's, there's lots of, um, different ways we can cut that pie, right?
Yeah.
Um, but it's time to start, you know, it really is time to start having that conversation. Cause every, had we done that five years ago, in a very different position today, right? So that every day that we delay making that decision, you know, impacts the future, so.
Yeah. So I'd love to have that discussion sooner than later so that we can figure out what our options are, what the costs are, and what the potential revenue would be expected after on various types of whatever. So we have an idea of what we can anticipate. Probably not for this council, but for the next one, because somebody needs to stop the, the bleeding. So, um, I think those are the, the major things I had. So, thank you.
I think Donnie had her.
Have a quick update on the seventy-two million out of the seventy-two eighteen point four is roughly the offset levy payable on the city-owned land. I don't have the percentage break, but I do have the amount that, um, we owe as part of our, uh, contribution. That's about eighteen point five. And then the total cost that should be recovered through the offset levy collections over the years is about thirty-three million.
So on, on the revenue side of it, um, fees and charges, anything there? Are we stuck with zero increase there?
Uh, no, like, so we're, every year, we, we really look at our fees and I know, um, Diane can speak to, to recreation. I think it's going through a great big fee review right now, of course, coming out of COVID and that kind of stuff. Um, one of the challenges or one of the, it's not a challenge. I mean, I guess it's, it's, it's in council policy and it's a good thing is that one of the things we try and do is also, um, be competitive in the region, right? When you're charging for, for some of those non-essential type services that people want to access, you have to be competitive. Um, you know, you raise your prices too much, then people stop coming altogether and then that actually reduces your revenue in the end. So there's a, there's a fine balance on fees, but we did. But honestly, we, we pushed fees anywhere we thought that we, we could. That was still kept us, still kept us competitive. Um, we're, we're adding, you'll see, um, as part of master rates, we've added a whole bunch of fees under the, under the fire bylaw, which has been, um, great, brand-new fees that many other municipalities charge that we have been providing free of charge for a long time. So we've added a bunch of fees. So we do look at all of that. Unfortunately, again, it's, you know, all those little changes, they're pretty small in the scheme of things, how much extra revenue you can generate by increasing a fee by two percent or five percent or, you know, it's pretty small, but we do look at it every year. Cause it's, that has to keep up as well, right?
And I find every time we increase a fee or introduce a new fee, and I'm thinking about the, um, sanitary line cleaning that we used to do on residential properties, many emails that we had from residents pissed off that we stopped doing that for free.
Right.
So council has to be pretty strong and say.
What are development, development fees and those sorts of, that we're competitive there? Or is there room there?
So all, all departments are looking at all those fees, as Dana said, especially fine engineering, uh, city services, recreation, parks, culture. So that's going forward, the fee, fee piece to September. And they are looking across the board, what's competitive. They are pushing some fees, so you will see some changes there. Um, and, uh, like Diane said though, there's only so much left necessity to, to move those fees.
Must cover everything.
Transit.
Well, yeah, but you, yeah.
It's gotta be.
I mean, and, and like has been said every time. So we're looking, but then point your fingers back this way. They're all looking back at us, right? Everybody's faced with this whole challenge. So I mean, yes, Bruce Grove, I think they just did a whole thing about where they reviewed their fees and they looked at ours and it's, I mean, it's, I mean, everybody's in this boat. It's not St. Albert that's paddling alone.
Of course, you could have that three men in a tub.
Okay. So maybe just to get the conversation going, we'll just start with the, kind of the initial column on the five percent scenario. So that means basically bringing down, um, taxes by three point two percent from what, from what we're sitting now at. Um, so in this scenario, and like I said, these are, these are, and we can play around with these numbers live if you, if you guys want. Right now, we've got a million dollars of the most funding, uh, applied, um, in this scenario. Um.
How much most funding do we have left?
We have about four million.
Proposing to sort of wean ourselves off of the dependency on what.
Yes, yeah.
So a million this year.
So do I think we could use more than a million this year? Yeah, we could. But at, at the five percent scenario, I wanted it to kind of make sense, right? We'll use more of it as, as the scenarios, as you want a lower tax increase, then we increase the contribution. The RMR levy. So again, this is the one point five percent. Of course, you know, uh, when I say this is not an administrative recommendation, like, these are not admin recommendations. This is one that we would never recommend, but it's definitely, it's, it's within council's purview. So in this particular model under five percent, we haven't made any changes to that. We've left the one point five percent RMR in. Um, in this scenario, we have also left the assessment growth for business cases, uh, to allow administration to, um, as, as much as we can address our capacity issues, like, uh, Mr. Fletcher had said, like, I think our total ask was well over three million. This only allows us, uh, just over a million, um, to put in there. So we've left that at zero. Uh, this particular, um, scenario, we've put in the two percent franchise fee increase, um, which generates, uh, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And then we get into the grant. So we'll just kind of go through them. So how, how I basically set this up is, um, it's, it's sort of the amount of the grant, how much you would potentially want to reduce it by and over how many years? Because we recognize that in some cases, to just cut somebody off like right now is probably not realistic. Um, so if we just start with the first one, so the library grant, so basically all this was, so their total grant is like four point six million. So the one point five million that I have in here is the very low end of the EY recommendation on, on how much they're being kind of, um, overfunded compared to other municipalities. The cost per capita, that's their lowest end. I think, I think in the report originally. Sorry. I want to say it was like one point five to two point seven million was their estimated, um, where they thought we could reduce. So I just put it in at the lowest level. And in this scenario, I said, we, we would commit to doing the whole recommendation of the one point five million, but we would do it over three years. So five hundred thousand a year to give them time to potentially adjust, right?
So, um, that was based on municipal comparators, right? They were just kind of like the, the rest.
Sort of like a cost per, per capita that people, that other municipalities were paying for library services.
And I, 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 can I stop you at each one from now on, Diane? Cause and, and kind of get a sense of where council sits because.
Okay, yeah. Do you want to go back up and start again and talk about?
Well.
No, but just on, on these ones, this is where.
Okay. I think, um, and, and instead of maybe going the five percent all the way down, why don't we go library at five, four, or three?
Okay.
Okay. So.
So I, oh, so actually in my three scenarios, I've, I've left the grants the same all the way across, I think, all three scenarios.
Okay.
And pulled the other levers to get there.
Okay.
Um.
All right. So let's just kind of have a conversation, council, about their recommendation to phase in a one point five percent reduction in library grants, how we would manage that, the public perception and that, those kind of things. So who wants to go first? Otherwise, I'm just gonna call on you. Cause we're gonna have to have a some sort of straw vote for, for staff to know whether they're moving forward with this or not, right? So why don't I start with you, Wes?
Well, I'd, I'd probably support this. I'd love to see the, uh, the work of the library in terms of their financial.
Their audit?
Their audit. Having said that, if we're overspending by one point five million, isn't that what it was in the?
Well, it was one point five to two point six or something. And maybe Daria can correct me. I, I seem to be missing a page that I thought I had. Um.
I know you guys.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. One point four six million to two point seven one.
So you took the most.
Said the estimated.
So you took the most conservative. To me, that's a good start. And, and the, the library's gonna have to get used to that idea. So I would have my vote.
I think I know your answer.
It would have my vote as well. And I believe that I've heard from the public many times that they see that as an avenue to address as well.
I've heard from different parts of the public that they support it, strongly support it. So I, I, I think we could, we could have that back and forth. So, I mean.
It's gonna be hard.
It's gonna be hard.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, I, I think phasing it in is, is fair. Wouldn't want to all of a sudden surprise, cut somebody off, cold turkey. Um, that, that would not be right, but, uh, yeah.
Well, I don't, I want to see what the reports.
Yeah.
Do you want to wait?
Yeah, well, all these decisions aren't being made today. They're all being made in budget.
Well, no, actually, they're building a budget after today.
I was with eight point two and we can drop it in November.
So that's what I was gonna, that's what I was just gonna suggest to clarify is what we're hoping to be is that we, like, we want to meet council's direction in terms of what we put in front of you for a budget. So you've given it, you're giving us some kind of a target. And what we want you to do is give us a sense of which levers are you potentially open to. Then that way we can say, okay, we've presented a budget in compliance with what council has asked us for. Every one of these items is still potentially up for debate during budget.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me know if, if there's gonna be work done on something. Like I don't want you doing a bunch of work on reducing the library grant through comms or, or whatever. And then we say no to it at budget. And then we say no to everything you said at budget, because we get the public pressure, those kind of things. So I, I just want council to be kind of.
It's gonna start today. This is live. This is live. It's gonna start today.
Yeah.
And this is all out there now.
I mean, I think that as far as the library goes, I mean, the library board said that there was factors that weren't considered in the E and Y report. And I have to like listen to both sides. So that's why I want to see if they have to stay in the report. I want to see what the comparators are to see if E and Y was, um, really considering everything when they brought in that, or if there are other funding sources that the libraries were getting that we are not acknowledging. I think that the branch library needs to go. And they need, it's four hundred and some thousand dollars on, on operating. And like, that's an easy, like, there's open six hours a day, not even, I might wish it opened seven days a week, or blowing four hundred thousand dollars on that. So that's an easy one, but they also need to get out of their lease. So we need to be able to give them time to do that and let them know that that's not gonna happen, or we don't want to support that. And if they still want it, they're gonna have to make different changes. So to me, that's like a clear one that we need to make sure that they understand. Um, however, the rest of it, I need to see what's going on. I want to be fair to everybody. And I don't, I don't want it where the, the public is dramatically affected by essential services not being able to provide it. Some of the stuff that's coming in, sometimes nice to have a lot of the programming, but I'm not sure if they're even resuming the programming right now, and yet they still have the budget they have. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing that report and I'm really hoping that they took the offer seriously, um, and didn't come back with something that isn't substantial enough to actually help themselves. Because if we cut it by five hundred thousand, this was really a gift to them so that they could actually figure out how they're gonna manage that money. If they chose not to, to manage that pretty well, that would be to their peril. Um, so that's where I'm at with it.
Natalie, how are you feeling about library?
I, I agree with Wes. Um, I think starting at the, the low end of the, the recommendations phased in is, is the right approach. Um, I definitely don't want to micromanage kind of how they get to that. I, I, I don't think that's our place. Um, so that's where I'm at.
I, I like what you've got.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to, I just want to share that one of the challenges, um, Counselor Hughes, is what, what you're seeing is that unfortunately, I don't think the timing is gonna line up well, because I think like, we're gonna have to develop the budget and have something ready to present before that report's been presented to council. So.
Really, they're not gonna have it?
Well, if they're saying fall, like, and we're doing budget, like, we're putting it together. So we're either gonna have to include it or exclude it. And then if, if later information comes in, new information becomes available, then that's debatable at budget time, right? Like, so that's what I would suggest is that we will include something in the budget. And then, you know, with new information becomes, because we're not gonna be able to wait.
To the, the library and see if we can get, what, what we can pull.
And maybe it'll come earlier.
Yeah, five hundred grand, the chopping block here. They better start coming back with that report sooner than later because,
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's just that we know what's going on if they want to, um, have us reconsider any decisions.
Yeah. And it also goes to, to what we were saying before, but exactly what you're saying is sometimes these changes seem simple, but there's lots of, there's lots of factors. And sometimes there's more information you need. There's, like you said, that the, the library lease for the branch library, like, I don't know how they can get out of it or how much that would cost. I don't know how they can get out of it, or how much that would cost, so can you really achieve savings? So it's, they're, they're not always as, as cut and dry as just saying we're just gonna reduce funding, right?
I mean, I, I guess the thing is that you can come forward with any budget you want. We can come forward and say it's five, two, it may end up to the seven, six, depending on budgets fluid in November, as anything could happen, so. I don't really care if you say, here's eight, two, and here's a recommendation for five, if you want to reduce it. It doesn't matter, because in the end, it's gonna be ultimately a council motion that keeps it up.
Although we have a challenge in the fact that we have a council motion on the floor that says bring a budget between three and five percent. So I can't put an eight point, unless we do a subsequent motion that provides that, I can't come in with something higher than that. Today, we're actually hoping that you guys will actually narrow that down, that range down even a little farther if you saw the recommendations. But we'll see, we'll see where the conversation.
So I'm, I'm gonna, for every one of your suggestions, get a bit of a straw vote, so I think there was a, in favor, and then maybe we, because what I'm asking, I guess, is the question is, are you gonna build that into the budget? Or are you gonna put it to us like in a separate piece of paper and say, council, you need to make the motion to reduce the library budget?
Our intent.
To be in, and then you're gonna point it out to us, and we have to make a motion to go the other way.
So I would suggest with the current motions on the floor, we have no choice but to build it in, because otherwise, I can't say five percent, like, when I, when I put forward the budget.
I, I quite like that word.
Okay.
All right.
It's, it's a challenge, we've done it both ways, where we've built it into the budget, and then you guys have motioned them out, and we did it the other way, where you, yeah, so it's, and it both ways had their challenges. So, yeah, we're just looking to decide what, what, we will do what you ask us to do.
And don't, and don't worry about bringing in a, a, a tax increase that allows us to be heroes and decrease it, because honestly, this is just a team effort, right, Ben?
So according to the consultant for the library, they should have the report to library September, October. So we'll probably get it November at the time of.
Okay.
Budget.
Well, we'll have it, we can make a decision.
All right, so the next grant, and like I said, we just listed all the grants that we have, so we have the beatification grant. I know this was one that was considered and, and not exercised by council last year. Again, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's not.
What does that, what does that mean, the flowers on the corner?
That's the flowers that we, or the grants that we give to, to businesses.
Oh, so that's separate, though?
It's not the city stuff, it's like other.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's businesses, like downtown businesses, that they apply and they get a fifty percent credit, I think.
Not the big flower pets on the corner.
No, no, no.
Okay, such it.
Yeah, that's.
This is a grant to businesses.
Right, and so this one, we just put in, you know, a hundred percent reduction all in.
That'll save us zero one.
Point zero one, yeah.
Like, yeah, that, I'll go the other way, Natalie, what do you think about that one?
I, I have no opinion about something that's small. I mean, if we need to cut it to get to the five percent, that's fine, but.
Mike?
Sure, we're, cut it, yeah.
Ken?
I, I don't even think there's that big of an upkeep, uptake on it, so I don't sense that that's a big issue. I mean, I mean, again, it's so tiny.
Down to eight. Yeah, yeah, I wanted to go master. Okay, everyone seems okay with that one. Anonymous.
Wow.
The next one is community events, so we have seventy eight thousand, goes into the budget annually for community events.
Give an idea of what those events.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's some grandfathered events, like the parade, so they make a rodeo parade.
Canada Day?
And it, well, yes, and we also get a federal grant for Canada Day. And then there's annual grants that come forward, so Rock in August, there's, uh, is Danielle online?
Light Up Festival.
Soapbox, um, this, all those kinds of caroling, there's the church caroling. And that ones, it depends on who applies each year, some of those ad hoc grants that, events.
What are we looking at for numbers?
Total number of.
In the past, what, how much have we used up? Because we've never used up the whole thing, have we?
Uh, in the past, we have, of course, last few years, no.
So does this seventy seven not include the grandfathered ones?
It does include the grand.
It does, it's everything. It's everything. So how much do we have spending in grandfathers?
Um, so is Danielle online? Again, it's used, I think it's about a third of that. Potentially of that, that's shit, I can.
And that's a per capita, right?
Yeah.
It's like a fifty cents per capita or something like that. Okay. Yeah, and if we've created a permanent reduction, we're gonna have to kill the policy then, too.
Yeah.
And she just joined the meeting.
Oh.
Oh, she's probably listening.
Probably on YouTube, listening.
Yeah. What I would suggest is we keep the grandfathered ones, and then we allocate ten or something for spontaneous. So we're not gonna be cutting it by seventy seven, but we would be cutting it by. Change the policy instead of fifty percent per capita and make it forty five cent per capita. Or something of that nature.
Danielle, do you know how much of our current grant goes to the grandfather event?
I think it's, uh, sorry, I'm here now, I think it's about, I think it's about twenty thousand a year.
Okay.
Because that's like Starfest, too, right?
So if we were to move it to like fifty percent of what it currently is, we would still have some latitude for other events.
So if we, if she says it's twenty thousand, but we just want to make this like fifty seven thousand?
No, no.
Or not even that much.
We can, we can look at the number.
What she didn't want to do is take, was grandfather the, pay the twenty, and then add another ten thousand versus spontaneous. So roughly between forty to fifty percent of that seventy seven number.
I'm just, I'm just thinking for, like, for purposes of today, and again, these numbers are not set in stone, we have to go back and look at them, but do you want me to change numbers so you can see what happens? Like, this is, I, it's hard, it's hard to say, because like I said, if you, if you say no to a lever, that means you have to do something else, right? Like, yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hit.
Yeah, do, do it.
I would do a fifty percent decrease for now to see how it looks, right?
Just roughly, like.
Point three, point zero three five percent.
Oh, shoot, hold on, I'm not supposed to do it on this tab.
That's the permanent tab. So it's a. Oh, you got a five percent, I have a four percent, look at you. Okay.
Broke it, didn't you?
I mean, I think we have to realize, like, when we're doing all this, that yes, it is a very high tax increase right now, but we also have to look at what we're, what we're costing. Shelley just said, that's good value for seventy seven thousand, all those events, it's good. Yeah, you know. Natalie, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I, I would just say, this, you know, based on my strategic plan, I'm completely opposed to the reduction in this particular one. You know, part of the, the vibrancy that we build is through our community events, and if we're not actively encouraging members of the community to, to bring forward their own events, to plan their own events, that we're really going to be missing out. So I am definitely opposed to this one. I, I know we talked earlier this year about increasing it, I think Shelley, you commented on that, so that's where I'm sitting with this.
Well, no, I mean, I'm going back, I mean, I think I heard somebody say that, I mean, when we talk about our service inventory, we talk or the actual grants, and whether it's the outside agency grants or the other ones that are coming, that's based on a per capita amount, right? Fifty cents, forty cents, I mean, wouldn't it be cleaner rather than ax that, the number? I mean, that's how we come at it. We'd have to come at it maybe by saying we will cut it to like forty cents, uh, forty cent, change, change it, rather than, I mean, and maybe it's, maybe it's reverse thinking, we, we come with a number, and then what it is, what it is, right? But I'm, I'm with, I'm with Natalie on this one, I mean, otherwise, these people are gonna be coming to council. That's the, that's the default. They're gonna show up at our door, and they're gonna say, we need twenty thousand dollars for the Ringet tournament that's gonna come, we need, and so.
Ukrainian fundraiser, we gave money for.
Yeah, we gave, we gave money, yeah, we gave one offs to them, so I'm with, I'm with Natalie on this one. I think otherwise, like, this is value for money, and we're talking point zero seven percent.
Yeah. Everything's little on this category.
Yeah, I know.
I, I would like to just see what the, the numbers were for usage for the prior, before COVID hit, like, what we're looking at. And that way, if there is, if we are going beyond budget, then we could discuss that.
Now, I think that it was pretty well to budget, and there was often, you know, demand for the events grant. I don't think it was really underutilized, and not all grants are all per capita costs, they're all, all of them right now have varying different policies that establish what.
This one is per capita, though.
Yeah, and so that's the work that staff are doing right now, is they just never come back with the event policy, the overarching event policy, and now they're going back to all the programs, looking at them.
I don't think there's gonna be anything on this list that's gonna be easy.
No.
No, and there's no easy.
And that's our job. I, 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 I agree with everything you said, but I would, I would do a fifty percent reduction of this grant. We're still encouraging events, still having Canada Day Parade and stuff.
I mean, at the very least, it sounds like it's a topic that there would be good debate on, because it's not a clear cut. Everybody says yes, everybody says no.
And we could do some additional research and come back and.
Have a recommendation.
Those are grandfathered, so we aren't talking much.
Okay, we're not, we're not gonna, okay. Uh, reoccurring community events are up to twenty five percent, ad hoc community events, forty five percent of the funding allowance, I mean.
So you're looking at the policy?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Edmonton, so.
We put that, we just left that, we didn't even, it's a thousand dollars.
We don't do much for a military at a thousand dollars.
No, we, I just put it on the list because I wanted to say it was all encompassing.
You hired, you hired an ex one, so.
Yeah. Salary just went down a thousand bucks.
Is that your salary line?
Um, I don't even know what micro grant is.
That's an interesting one, so I believe, and I, I don't know, um, somebody from community services is online, that, this was a.
This Connie.
Put in place years ago that I do not believe was ever.
Twenty acts did.
Yeah, the micro grant.
Yeah, so that's one that they're also suggesting that we no longer provide that grant. We've never, we've never actually allocated it.
Okay.
Uh, so, and there's a huge difference.
In the scale of the grant, then, not a micro grant.
The micro grant, like, can be.
Okay, um, this will probably be a big conversation, so outside agencies. So this, so we have, we put almost six hundred thousand dollars a year to the outside agencies. This does not include the FCSS component that those agencies get, because remember, a lot of them get funding from two different pieces of money, so this does not include the FCSS stuff, it's the additional pieces that they get on the outside agencies. So just as a placeholder, um, you know, obviously, we recognize that we would probably never get rid of all of this money. You know, depending on the organizations that are there, we'd probably never get rid of all of it. So we said, you know, at, at the highest level, a fifty percent reduction, and again, a three-year phase, full phase in for, for them to be able to figure it out. This will be a tough one, my note for.
I feel like not that long ago, we had a presentation, probably before the election, that St. Albert was above and beyond generous compared to other municipalities in this, that we were giving out money like candy. No other municipality supports their outside agencies as much as St. Albert does. So I think that would be important to bring back, especially if we're gonna go down this path to, for the public, but it's things like, you know, I, I won't name an agency, but that just continually depend and, on the city to fund everything they do, and don't make efforts to, as long as they have a makesel, you know, so Natalie.
I just have a question about this one, I'm curious about what the reduction would be if we only put in the required FCSS contribution instead of.
I've got that written down, yeah, I've got that one written down, Natalie, that's a good one.
Like, if we only put the.
The province says twenty percent, um, we, we put in thirty to thirty-five, so wean, wean us off. That's separate from this, and I actually had that written down, Natalie, but.
Connie might wanna, yeah.
Yeah. Because then we can put that back on the province to start funding what they're supposed to fund.
Yeah, yeah.
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 So Connie, maybe two questions for you, first one is, are the outside agency grants, so, um, is there a specific question about the outside agency grant?
Um, Connie, do you remember that council was giving a report talking about municipal comparators on this type of granting, I guess?
It was, Anna gave it to the CLSC.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any numbers on comparators, but for the FCSS funding, this one doesn't apply to the FCSS funding, although there are agencies that we fund who do receive money through a city agency grant.
Natalie's question was, what, what percentage are we matching the provincial FCSS grant to? What is that dollar amount, and if we were to take it just as the twenty percent, what would we save? You might not have that now, but that might be.
I do, it's, it's just over two hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred and fifty-four. The only thing to consider is, especially if we look at the last through, three years through COVID, and, and it's happened in other years, if we don't spend all our money, we come considerably close to the percent that the city has to contribute, so. Although it shows that there's about a two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar over contribution, we always come very close to the required match if, if all of the funds aren't spent, and, and sometimes they aren't, and in COVID, they weren't, so we were considerably close. So a reduction would have put us under and risk, and put us at risk of losing our provincial grants.
So, so what she's saying is we, we budget for higher than the eighty twenty, right? But what ends up happening is because we have vacancies, because we have other things, our actual cash contribution at the end of the year, when we do our financial report, because we've had vacancies or we've had other reasons why certain programs couldn't be funded at the same level, we've actually spent less. And so when you actually look at them, uh, the numbers at the end of the year, we're actually, end up being close to the twenty twenty. But from a budget perspective, it's higher, but the problem is if you only budget for twenty percent, and then you have vacancies and, and other savings, you're gonna be below that twenty percent contribution when you do your actual report at the end of the year, and then we risk losing grant funding.
That's for internal programs, right? It's like, we're funding Family Resource Center through FCSS, we just give them money and spending it then.
So it, that, that's an expense, so it would be more our internal, correct, Connie?
That's correct. Yeah, so right now, historically, I'm gonna say the last three to five years, we've been underspent on the grant that we have available to the agencies in the tune of about seventy-nine thousand dollars. So that we've not, we've not given out the full grant that we have available. Given the scenario we're at, we're to, today with the contribution you give, so we've been coming under in giving out that funding. Like, again, I said, to the tune of about seventy-nine thousand dollars.
But we're over budgeting by two hundred and something, so there is some room there.
Yeah, so if, if that's something you want us to throw on the table in terms of making sure that we're as close to that eighty twenty as we can get without risk, we can do some more analytics on it, um, but we would definitely, there, there is definitely his implications, um, so we'd want to make sure that we're doing the proper analysis and we're not, you know, making a bad recommendation that's gonna have funding at risk, so there's definitely more work that would have to be done on that, but if that's something council says should be on the table, that's probably something we can do, we can probably bring that back.
Um, and if I, if I could add to that, one of the things that we did this year with change in staffing, we no longer have the internal counseling services, so we were able to reduce our salary by not having those counselors on staff, and we have contracted counseling, it's been a, a good reduction. And an example of that would be the Sexual Assault Center had an eighteen-month waitlist, so providing counseling dollars to financially vulnerable residents. I, I know it's, it's apples and oranges, but we have, we, we, we have residents at risk that we would have to be looking at supporting in other ways if we didn't have opportunities like that to support them. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks, Connie. I have more piece of information just on the events grant, so staff have gotten back to the trending, so pre-COVID, we spent anywhere from fifty-nine thousand to the max seventy-two thousand every year, and most of the time, it was over the sixty thousand up to the seventy-two thousand.
Hey, what do we feel about the non-FCS support for outside agencies, the outside agency grant? Anyone, Mike?
Well, again, should, you know, trying to, trying to wean them off of, of, of that and do it in a, a still supportive way, I guess, over three years. Again, a tough one, outside agencies support our residents in the most critical times of need.
Oh, yeah.
Me, I guess, can I jump in? Sorry, I'm just gonna pick, I, I'm gonna pick up in relation, I think, the, the pain that Mike is associating with.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, when you look at it, I mean, and, and Mike's on the CSAC, and Natalie was on CSAC, Machine is on CSAC. When these outside agencies come to us, I mean, they, they use that grant, yes, they have the FCSS for program delivery, because that's all they can do. They can only deliver the program. Use the outside agency to turn the lights on, pay some of their staff, um, you know, deal with some of the other operating expenses. Yeah, rent included that, or even sometimes they say, well, we need, like, in the case of Red Willow, we need a, a new truck, or a new van, or a new transportation. So they have no other place to access this other than going into the community. So they have no other place to access this other than going into the community. And so. We are the community in that sense. And I'm, I realize we've got to find the dollars, but do you find the dollars on the back of our media citizens? I don't, and I, 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 I can't, I, I mean, I, I think we have to look at where we, where we can. And I think every one of these outside agencies is feeling the pinch horrifically right now. And they're looking at, uh, upper levels of government, just like we are, but we are upper levels of government for a lot of these agencies. And so. You talk about unintended consequences, wow.
Yeah, but.
I, I, I realize there's a, I realize there's a.
Too much.
Not, yeah, but that's different than, that's, that's FCS S dollars, and that's a little bit different in relation to it. And we're, FCS S is outside of this, remember, they're offering programs.
Agencies grant that was.
It is, it is, it is, but I think that we can go through it, but I don't think we can just arbitrarily identify, uh, a hundred thousand dollars or two. I mean, I think there's a lot of discussion that has to happen. So I'm, I'm saying. If you want to say a hundred thousand dollars, let's, let's scan the, the list, so we have, you know, you got Red Willow, you've got, um. Victim Services, Victim Services right now is going to be, they're, they're, they totally changed their model. Um, then you've got, um.
Is that a further education?
For, yeah, faith, you got, you've got, yeah, you've got a lot of agencies that are going to be actually coming to, coming to the different levels of seeking more. And so I agree, we have to, we can say something, but just to arbitrarily pull a number out of the sky, sitting around here.
Fifty percent over three years, right? But I'd like to see the report that Anna had, I think that would help council make.
I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Cause don't forget, not every one of those outside agencies is serving our most vulnerable. Most of them are, but not all of them.
I'm trying desperately to think if I, Natalie's got her hand up, so I apologize.
Natalie, go ahead.
Help me out Natalie.
Yeah, and you know what, I absolutely agree that we need to support the organizations that, that, that need the support. And I think, you know, Food Bank is a great example, they are always going to require funding from Molly, and I absolutely support that. Um, but.
I know, blank.
By, by reducing this grant, we also, you know, bring, bring these partners to the table in terms of, um. Protecting our most vulnerable residents from an eight point two tax increase, right? So, so it's doing two of those things, I think, um, even right now, it's really interesting, the, um, Canadian Red Cross is expanding one of their programs across Western Canada. That right now is being serviced by, um, you know, for example, the, the North Edmonton Seniors Association where I used to work. So one of the programs that is funded through municipal grant funding at the North Edmonton Seniors Association can be taken over by another organization. And, and reductions in funding force, force groups to kind of think creatively about how they can continue to serve people the best way. And it might not be through their organization, and that's okay. Um, so I'm. I'm at this time comfortable with the, the numbers that, that are in here. Um, certainly want to see more and kind of, I agree that we still can make changes in, in November when we have more information. But as a preliminary, um, kind of budget, uh, this is an important lever.
Wes and Shelley, you guys.
Yeah.
Pass us a thumbs up.
I'm in favor but neutral on arguments.
I know, it puts a little bit more work on CSAC to make those hard decisions on when we give them the pot of money from they fund, right?
I think all of us that have been on CSAC recently know how hard this is already, and like when I was there the year before, I mean, we were already over eighty thousand dollars over requests. And had to come in under this, so we drop another hundred grand each time. I think that, you know what, sometimes you like, you can't lose weight by chopping off your leg. So.
Definitely no increase.
You develop a limb anyways, yeah.
Well, you're definitely running too quickly, so like, I, I think that you have that extra money is coming from that matching thing, so I think that that's worth discussing. I think that cutting off these guys, especially with very little notice, is unfair. So if we're going to do a cut, it shouldn't even be for this year, it should be for the following year for discussion, because they need to be able to have time to make the changes. And they run a skeletal, um, budget out of the gate, like.
They're doing their budgets right now, they're filling out that application right now.
They are, but they're also not anticipating having an, an additional cut of tax thousands of dollars.
Yeah, right, so, um, you know, it's a really good point, Council Hughes, they are, um, already funding for next year's budget, so giving them a bit more time, if that is the plan moving forward, I think would be really. Now, for them, as well as staff are looking at all of the granting, um, programs right now, and they are planning to come back to council with some more information. Um, some more details, those kinds of things as well. Again, it's really hard to compare grants across municipalities, because it's never apples to apples. Um, and it really is about the values of your, or of your community, um, that impacts the grants that you give out and how much you give out. So, um, so it's always good to compare, it's really about what's best for sake.
I, I'm just really concerned that, you know, like we have standards that we provide on the outside agencies, although it's a lot of money. Provide a lot of value to the residents and are much cheaper costs than if we take it over. So the minute that we do this, and then in five years from now, when those, those services are seriously hit or closed down because they can't continue, and they go, what happened? They go, well, council had a really tight tax increase for a couple of years, we decided to cut those per, problem permanently, we're going to regret that decision. So to me, this is like a bit of a holy grail, but the extra one that we have, the extra eighty grand on that other one, let's talk.
Yeah, and I, I.
Yeah, the one that we have extra money subscribe every year, that's what.
And I, I like, I like deferring it that one extra year, because that also kicks in what Natalie was talking about. It actually then maybe challenges them to, challenges them to start looking at, I mean, we always talk, Sheena and Natalie and I about duplication of services and outside. Who's doing what and how, and, and if there's an opportunity to work together to deliver that service. I mean, look, we brought in Boys and Girls Club to deliver a program now, right? And so, um, you know, I think there are opportunities, and I'm not saying it's not happening right now, but. This will give them a little bit of a breathing room.
But Boys and Girls was very clear that if we didn't have the sixty thousand support, they would not be able to.
They couldn't do it, no.
So it's sort of like, if we want to cut them down to forty five, we may be looking at getting it down to zero and then not running the program at all.
Yep.
At some point, you can't, if you continue to suffocate, you can't breathe. So.
Put a plastic bag.
Yeah.
Yep, no.
That's right.
I'm, I'm with, I'm with you on that.
Well, you can buy it back with an increase to your gas franchise fee on this five.
Gas, gas, we can't touch gas.
Being electrical, sorry.
We'll talk.
Well, I mean, this is if you want to make it look better, like if you want to say where it's eight point two, it's only seven point or six point eight, well, it would look better, but it's reality is still the same. So, I mean, this is all like small, small things.
Yeah, 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 and we're getting tripped up. Next one?
Okay, so just in general, if I can just sort of kind of summarize, it, it sounds like the majority would rather us leave this, not consider this for twenty three, maybe for twenty four.
Except for that.
No, but I, I'm talking the outside agency grant, not the FCS S side, but the outside agency grant. I mean, I've heard like Natalie said, she'd support putting it forward and.
I would do this, I would do this.
Okay.
Who knows what the boat is come November, but.
Yeah.
If, if we don't look at it. What are we saying?
Well, I mean, I guess you're walking, I mean, like, how do we? How do you put it in and then take it out if we're stuck with the three to five percent window? Like we just had the same conversation.
That's something else, so, something else bigger.
Okay, well, and that's possible, so I guess we can continue on it.
But I'm just going to point out.
I feel like I'm talking around fuzzy.
If you guys don't take any of these, it's up to the seven of you or six of you to come up with other ideas, no one else is coming up with other ideas, right?
Service place deficit, is that on the levy or is that on the taxes? Service place deficit, the two million.
Would be part of our, our basic tax.
So we could, if we were to say we don't want two million, but you guys probably have a one point five deficit, there's five hundred thousand.
But that's not how you can do, what.
We're doing that to them, we're doing the same thing to outside agencies.
You're right, but you're gonna have to say to Diane, stop offering those.
No, do it differently, two million deficit is just to me an unacceptable number. Like twenty years later, we have the same deficits we did on year one with no idea that we're going to change it, and we're not even discussing that on the table. But we're saying outside agencies, which hasn't had a raise in some cases for a decade, we're going to cut their budget, but we're not discussing a two million dollar deficit to move it to a one point five and say, do it differently. So I mean, if you want to have hard discussions, let's discuss what we're doing inside, or I mean, turn around, thanks not. Do we want to cut the guys that are helping people with victim services?
Yeah, and I.
You know, like, I think.
For me, um, we, we had talked about this before, when we were putting new dollars into new gym equipment at, at service. And I, I said, well, why are we supporting new gym equipment when we've got ten private gyms? That if people really want to go and work out at the gym, they can go buy.
But then that goes counter to, that goes counter to what Sheena was just saying around eliminating the one, how, how do we eliminate?
Eliminate the gym, function at service. I, I don't know, I'm.
Well, the gym is, yeah, you've got seven thousand members.
No, I don't, I don't know the numbers, I don't know, I'm just saying we have to.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, that's the problem, you're giving Diane an impossible mountain to climb if you say, cut five hundred thousand dollars, but oh, by the way, cut the gym.
No, but what, but what? Where, but where, where's the deficit?
Well, the deficit could be at any number of different places, I don't know, the pool, the, well, we can't.
Little kiddiescape place, I don't know, I, I don't know, that's.
Sorry, we're, Diane's probably trying to jump in here.
No, it's a conversation, really.
I don't know.
And it's very complex, and it, it does, um, you know, there's intensive consequences with all of these kinds of conversations. But with the service place, it does run at eighty percent cost recovery, which means eighty percent of the cost to operate that building comes from revenue. Every time you cut something in that building, it could impact the revenue, which could then impact the cost recovery, which could reduce the cost recovery. So it's a delicate balance, it needs to be looked at as a whole for sure. Um, but you know, to Council Hughes's point, we are doing that to the grants right now, looking at our grants, um, and our community organizations, uh, as well.
And, and so maybe, you know, at the end of the agenda report, we talk about kind of our next steps, right? Because that, like, that is not something we can literally fix in the next two months, right? Like, that's just not even realistic, that we're going to be able to figure that out, um, for the twenty three budget. But maybe that's something that gets put on the list potentially for discussion in the, in the next stage, when we're looking at service levels, so that we can properly. Analyze it and understand what the impacts would be, because you're right, like, we're at the point, like, we can't just cut positions and money out of a budget without stopping doing something, right? And the problem is, you need to tell us what we're going to stop, yeah, um, that's the challenge.
Natalie's got her hand up. Natalie?
Thanks, just regarding outside agencies, can we leave this in for twenty twenty three? And would CSAC, CSAC be able to come back with, hey, these are recommendations? But if you have extra money, these are our recommendations, is that something that's possible or fair?
Patients perspective, um, we could have that conversation with CSAC, we could facilitate that conversation about, um, the grants that are, um. We, that we provide and get input on it and bring that back to council as part of, like, an administration is already going through all of the grant programs.
Or, sorry, no, that's not what I intended, so like, when they're actually making the recommendations about, hey, give this money to the food bank. I know that when, when I sat on the CSAB, we actually did a ranking. Um, is that something that, that we could do this year? Um, so we can kind of see where that cutoff line is.
Well, I don't know that it would necessarily be a cutoff line, or if it would be each one got a little less, not necessarily one whole agency potentially got caught. I mean, I don't know how they would do it, but, but I think what you're suggesting is we tell them the smaller pot of money to work with first, right? And then, if this doesn't go through, then what would they do with the extra hundred thousand dollars, who would they give it to?
Yes.
That's kind of what you're getting at.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we were going to go down that route now and start having those conversations with CSAC, we would need pretty good council support to tell them they have less money to work with.
Again, I'm still supportive with what you have proposed.
Well. You can, you can put it in, you can put it in, but I mean, it might come up.
Yeah.
What you're asking ultimately is an impact assessment, right, on, with, with this, as you would allocate the money this way, then what's the impact assessment?
That's what I'm saying.
Yep, so to Council Jolly's point, staff could facilitate with CSAC that, that conversation that way, saying, you have half of this pot of money, what's the priority allocation? And then if you're going to add another hundred thousand of the full amount, here's how they would prioritize it, we could work with CSAC on that.
Yeah, Anna's done it before, she's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Yeah, so just for, for our work here, like I said, I guess, we just be kind of need some, and we, we've got a pretty good split here. I think, of people that are saying included or don't include it, so. Again, I guess I would argue that's one of those one, then that it's obviously would produce a pretty good debate. Um, there, you seem to be kind of split here, so maybe it goes in and you debate it.
Yeah, but, and that's what I, I, that's kind of where I landed on. Again, I, I feel like I'm bouncing around fuzzy dice.
You might come with other information, like between now and when we're, as we're putting together the budget, if there's something that comes up that we hadn't considered, that would be like, definitely, we'll come back and have that conversation with you if we decide. And, and as you can see from the motion that we've kind of put on the floor for you guys to do, we've always asked you to do is kind of indicate the buckets. As opposed to, since we talked about whether we would do specific, but I, I feel like we all need a bit of flexibility, but I guess we just want to know generally. If there's a bucket that is on the table, or should a new bucket that we didn't have on there, we kind of want to know what parameters we're, we're working in.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to know why at twenty fourteen we broke even, then we were minus three, minus six, one point four, and then one point nine, then we're two. I want to know why we dropped so quickly over less than ten years. Cause we were able to break even for one year, and we've had a very small deficit for that period of time, and then it just started tanking. So it's not that we can't do it, it's just that we're not doing it, and I don't know why.
Or there's, sorry, Council, you talk about service.
Yeah, or there's a factor.
Until this becomes a zero, you're going to hear that word from out of my mouth a lot.
Okay, um, next one on the list, Young Artists Legacy, it's super tiny.
Yeah.
But again, on the list, so is that.
Our middle initiative.
Or out.
I thought that got switched to alternate years anyhow, didn't it?
That's, no, uh, Young Artists Legacy, alternate year. So there was, I think you're talking about a program, some, there's a, some kind of a, like, it's not the mayor's celebration, that's every year, is no.
Well, it was related to the mayor's celebration of the arts and the young artists, like, seems alternate years going forward.
There's definitely.
Every second year, I thought maybe that's what you were thinking of, I think we, okay, Connie, did you?
We gave out to three kids this year.
Yeah, this is an annual grant, and it's actually fourteen hundred, uh, not two thousand, and we do give it every year.
Okay, that was easy.
Well, I just broke everything.
Six hundred dollars. Okay.
Thanks for that clarification, Connie.
Environmental initiatives.
Thirty percent reduction in that grant.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm a hard no for this one as well, as again, going to a strategic plan.
For which, for environmental, for environmental?
For environmental, yeah.
Would you be okay with a fifty percent reduction?
No. It's, it's already very, very low and quite competitive.
They like schools and.
I'm comfortable dropping it.
Me too.
So other, is there?
But we need to.
I mean, this is something we do, but I mean, is there other ac- avenues for, um. Them to access something similar, like, does the province offer granting and initiatives around that? Because I mean, I mean, help me out Natalie, so some of them, is this some of like the, um. Um, for the schools and some of those things, is that the grants for them?
Yeah, there's community gardens, I know, Mike would probably know better than I would at this point, but yeah, community garden.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's all those things, community gardens, uh.
Well, naturalization.
Or programs at the school. Yeah. Okay. Doesn't, you know, we, we've been pushing all the environmental things for years and just seems again, a small amount of money to. You know, it has a big impact, right? But it's kind of our grassroots.
Why is it not funded by the schools?
Some of this, well, maybe there is matching in some cases, but yeah, you're right.
Yeah, they, I think the schools are, are focused on their academic curriculum and not the environmental, taking kids on a, you know, a bus trip out to.
Big lake.
Yeah.
Not just schools, we put solar panels on United Church.
Yeah, that's right. I mean.
All the solar panels is more grants out there now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just so everyone knows, I know you guys aren't on Zoom, Ryan just commented that the projects had to, um, be education projects, uh, open space, natural area enhancement. Reclamation, waste reduction, um, wildlife or biodiversity. Um, wildlife or biodiversity, so all sorts of different things. So it's not specifically having to do with schools, communication stuff, all sorts.
And it was fully used last, can you, is is Ryan there? Was it fully expensed last time?
Oh, yeah, I think they give them out every year.
Yeah.
He says yes.
You want to keep it?
Yes.
Ken?
Um, could we reduce it a little bit? Or is that going to be significant? Is that really? I know, but I mean, if we reduce it by.
Subscribe, but you can reduce it.
Well.
Not always every year.
No, but I mean, if we if we took a little bit like, I'm not, I. You took ten thousand dollars off of that or whatever. I mean, again, we're talking about. In your little, I mean, I mean, you know what, I'm going to keep it. I'm going to keep it in. I'm going to keep.
I I have no problem reducing it by fifty or a hundred.
Okay.
Fifty or a hundred? Okay, Wes?
Fifty.
Sure. I can live with fifty. Make a decision.
That's okay.
You know what, we're talking about what? What's our total? Hundred and seventy million? Talking about fifteen thousand.
Okay, um, the next one's a utility relief grants. Of course, this one actually doesn't impact taxes. It impacts the utility rates, but I just. And it's tiny, but it is another grant program that we that we offer. Um, and I think it's pretty well subscribed. We pretty much kept it out. It's only twenty four thousand dollars.
We can give a quick update on that. I think based on the current utilization. Um, I think we budget for a hundred and twenty households. We've been two twenty, we paid out to fifty two households, twenty one to thirty seven and. Currently, we'll probably be around budgeting a boat for fifty three, so we could do a fifty percent reduction on that, based on utilization.
And still not it really impact.
I'm 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 with, I'm good with that. And I was going to ask about who accessed it, how much.
This was brought in when we um redid our utility policy and we had a big spike and made this motion to try to do some relief, but. The numbers have gone down since then.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
I thought we just gave two hundred grand or a hundred fifty thousand for it and it was just like a lump sum, then it was slowly dwindling. Do we actually make it as an annual payment at some point?
They have to apply every year, but it's 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 a two hundred dollar flat payment for.
No, no, I meant like our reserve to pay for it. I thought we had and it has never actually dwindled. Did we actually?
Moved it into, uh, while the council approved to move it into the operating budget, so we gave back the rest of the money that was from their original stabilization fund. And then we just built it into the operating budget.
Natalie?
I'm just wondering, is that still um kind of administered through the community village or or is the city doing that?
The community village is still is still looking after that. And I can add to that, over the last couple of years. Um, just as a result of COVID, they've been able to access some grants to support um residents. And that's probably why this is down somewhat this year. I would be, I would be a bit nervous moving forward of of losing that grant because I don't know that those COVID dollars will be available in the future years.
Yeah, and actually I'm happy with kind of whatever number is being used, um, because I think it's great to direct people to the community village. Because they have such a great network of resources to support people. It's not just this one checkbox that's that's being accessed. So I I like this one.
Is it the same people that apply every year?
Typically.
They have to qualify on some.
It's it's an income based.
As well. All right, seniors tax grant?
Yeah, so again, so this is one that, uh, so all senior, so it's tied to a provincial program. Um, so seniors that are eligible for provincial program, and I can't remember which one it is. Um, we automatically give them this credit on their taxes. Um, so it is an in income based um grant as well. Yeah.
And it's currently being fully utilized. We have six hundred and fifty three properties this year and we dispersed a hundred and thirty thousand. So the uptake has been consistently in that range of the six hundred. And it's for uh seniors that are eligible for the Alberta senior benefit.
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, the seniors property tax deferral program.
And so that one, like it actually isn't even really about uptake because they automatically get it.
So this is not the deferral that.
No, no, it's but it's people who kind of qualify for that that also qualify for this. So it's, like I said, it's not an uptake thing.
Don't do the deferral anymore, do we?
Well, the province does.
But we, okay, so they pay their taxes and then they own a bigger percentage of their home every year, kind of?
Yeah, or something, yeah. So what do we think about that?
That one, I I that that's really on the backs of seniors. I think that would be hard.
Okay. Uh, then we've got the community capital grant. Um, so of course, this is an annual program.
Hold on, just can I get you to scroll up so we can see it on? Thank you.
I keep forgetting. There we go. Um, so it's a two hundred fifty um thousand dollar annual program. This one actually comes from from. The cap kind of from the capital levy and then we transfer it into operating. Um, I know Diane, you can probably speak to its utilization and stuff. Um, and and who utilizes it, many council, I think is quite familiar, but.
Yeah, so pre-COVID, um, we pretty much maxed out this grant every year. It's all a community organization, so it might be minor baseball, might be organic gardens. It might be um various different.
Playgrounds.
Playgrounds, yes, so schools. Uh, so um it's for capital projects in the community. Uh, it's usually, it's always matched, so there's a percentage that they contribute the funding and the city uh provides some funding to not complete. Complete project costs. And um pre-COVID, we did see um if well subscribed. Over COVID, of course, some dropped a little bit. We do have some carryover reserves, so there's two hundred and seventy two or ninety two thousand dollars. Um, in this grant that we've carried forward, so we could fund um the twenty three program with the existing carryforward that we have. But I think the point, the conversation is this is a permanent.
Right, so if we, you know, if we eliminated the program, we'd still have enough money to run it for a year, but then it would be gone the following year. Or, you know, it could be, I mean, it could be considered a temporary reduction because we know we have money in reserve that we can use, so we could reduce the taxes this year. One time, but now we're in the same boat as using reserve. It's a one time, which means it comes back.
And historically, for reference, that was five hundred thousand dollars at one point. We reduced it to two fifty.
And we do allow many of these community organizations to deliver service, so minor baseball, delivers soccer, hockey, organic gardens. Amazing community services that they utilize this grant to support their service delivery.
If I can add to that, Diane, it's just also a risk of our of um the infrastructure not being taken care of, so our a lot of our um partner organizations use that capital. Uh, funding to support their operation and and those on lease parcels really come back revert to the city if they're. If that association fails to exist in the future, so it does have a risk for us if they don't take care of that infrastructure. So there is some investment that way that pays forward multiple times because usually it's a third, a third, a third funding.
Do do other communities have a similar grant program like this?
This is pretty typical. Would you agree, Danielle?
It's fairly common to have a capital program of some kind within a municipal framework.
I say reduce it by fifty, just make it two hundred and eliminate the carry forward. So if there is surplus. It goes back to capital or wherever you want to put it. It comes from operating.
I don't want to reduce the carry forward. Because that's what saves us when you have like four playgrounds that apply in the same year.
But it's something used.
But it is, the thing is, we'll have one year worth two fifty and the next year will be five thirty. And so it like that it does, it's not, it fluctuates quite a bit and that's what the carry forward allows us to do is handle the fluctuations.
Sure, carry forward is really from COVID mostly.
Okay, okay. Just in that anomaly.
Yeah.
Reduce by fifty. God, find some money, guys. We're not doing anything here.
Well, all suggestions are not, like, these are all of how we cut out anything that's supporting the the city. And this is nothing about internal. So this is all about either increasing the franchise fee or in decreasing amount collected for capital. Or decreasing what we give out to um token. We're not discussing. Internal. That's why we're delicate talking about peanuts here. The the bulk of the money is not from here, it's internal.
And it's the discussion we need.
Kind of been doing that.
That's the service, I mean.
So, yeah.
What's up?
This is, that's how we've been making the the tax increase what it was for the last five years.
Was internal stuff.
Internal stuff.
Any thoughts from anybody else on the community capital one? Any any openness to reduce or this year or no, is it off the table?
I'm not interested in decreasing it. I mean, the thing is they'll come to us and ask for it directly. Otherwise, the whole intention of this was that there was an avenue so that. There were parameters and then there was a limit. And that was the point of having it was that we have the infrastructure covered without doing. So.
Plus, they have so many volunteers that contribute too.
And they got to convert two thirds of the money themselves.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, I take Danielle's point. I think that's, well, I mean, I mean, it's sort of like the same thing with our RMR, right? I mean, you're just pushing it down the road. So I mean, if you don't take care of the facility regardless. I mean, like, one of them is the curling ring, one of them is Red Willow, which are city owned facilities. And if they don't maintain it, and a lot of them maintain it one third, but this, and it makes, what it is, is this is like. Like, it's basically feeder money so that they can apply for larger provincial dollars, so CFAP grants, so things like that, so. Um, uh, I'm I'm, I don't, I mean, you're right, I don't think fifty would hurt, but I don't think fifty is going to help us anyways. I think I I I would keep it just because it's there's unintended consequences down the road where we're all of a sudden going to be on the hook for a major. Infrastructure repair to a roof or to, uh, I mean, look at the curling ring, they had to do all of that mitigation to deal with the um. Yeah, hazmat stuff, so. So I mean, that we would, we were a little bit on the hook, but still, it helped. So I I say, keep it. Literally, you're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other.
Out of curiosity, why did the budget go from seventy to eighty? What changed in the past thirty days?
Oh, I'll maybe ask Ann to come on and and uh.
She put it in here.
My smart clarification. I know when we were doing the original forecast, that was way back and like when we originally worked on that forecast was way back, way back in February and March. And just, you know, further information, economy and everything has kind of come in, we've, you know, where where costs are coming in. And do you want to?
So the major drivers were in staffing costs and contingencies, um, that's internal and union negotiations. It was on the cost of borrowing that has went up and then utility. Those were the main drivers, but there was. Those were the main ones that led to the increase.
For for just, for just information for me and maybe for whoever's watching, including staff. How much of our internal budget is staff? Like, you know, like policing where I came from before, eighty percent of eighty percent of my budget was staff. How much is it within the city?
Just fifty?
I want to say it was in the forties.
Forty four, forty four percent. So I I just want to get that out there, that we're we're talking only forty four percent of that overall dollars is staff.
Right, now, the only thing I will, I will bring up on that, which is a bit of anomaly though, is mind we are transit drivers.
Yes.
Right, so like some municipalities, those are city employees versus, so we do contract that. And then, of course, our RCMP are under a contract.
Yeah.
Right, so they don't show up on our salary.
No, but or would they, no, or would they?
No, they never would, but.
So I mean, I just, I mean, when we're talking internal, we're not, people are saying, well, you know, I've heard that, like, let's actually, let's cut staff. Well, what are you going to cut?
Well, it comes down to that when we have the bigger conversation with service level.
Yeah.
If you're willing to take service level, then that will be.
Yeah, yeah. And when are we going to, but when are we going to have that internal service cut?
At the end of this discussion, we'll start having that, how we're going to lay out that parameters, how we're going to consult with you guys, be everything else.
Fair enough, okay.
And that that's the challenge we're really facing for the twenty three budget. And, you know, like Counselor Hughes has said, we're we're not talking about the bigger internal things that are actually going to have the impact. But there's there's honestly, it's impossible um to figure that out in the next two months before we're ready to present the twenty three budget. So like unfortunately, some of these levers, that's all we have for this year. We have to start having those conversations because otherwise we're going to be in the same boat, having the same conversation every year and eventually we're going to have no more reserves. We're going to be impacting our 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 market contributions, which are going to have huge long term.
That's where the E Y report was done, right? To find those visions, and the only thing left is service levels.
Or Bill, is the forty four percent staff, um, is that? Full time equivalent or is or is that full time plus all all the cash, like we ramped up like six hundred people in the summer. All all in, okay.
It's forty four percent of operating or total budget?
Operating.
I always thought it was higher, but that's interesting.
If we include all the contract staff, like the traffic and stuff, what is the number then?
I'd have to go back, totally. Okay, so community capital.
I'm I'm for keeping it. Sheena said she was for keeping it.
Yeah, you can speak for me.
I just think you're robbing.
Yeah, no, uh, no, I. I would keep capital. I would keep it in there. Maintaining services if they don't do it, we end up. Blading the bullet later.
You're hearing, you said you'd be open to a small reduction.
Of community capital?
Yeah.
I but I keep, I do with the carryover thing.
Okay.
Sense, so.
Council Broadhead?
Yeah, I I understand the the merits of the of the grant. But what I'm looking at is that we're looking at the five percent. And we're not taking anything off here, so these other ones up here are going to have to be moving. And if we move them, we're not moving this way. I mean.
But that's.
Anyway.
You're not going to get big movement on this.
Oh, no, I understand that, so. Small reduction I could see. I don't want to lose the grant.
I need sugar.
Okay, um, so we've only got two more to kind of go through.
Can I, can I jump in on the community capital?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I'm I'm okay with the the fifty reduction suggested by by mayor, but I I would also say that I'd like to adjust the policy. So that it is intended for RMR, not growth capital.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I can live with that.
So replace a playground, not build a new one.
Yeah, or replace a roof or a bathroom.
I like that, Natalie.
Okay, so the next one on the list is uh public art. So for the, so by policy, our public art policy, basically, how it works is I think it's a. See, for half a, I should have looked it up, half a percent or a percent of all of our capital projects, up to a maximum, what started at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But then there's an inflationary. So at this point, we would have budgeted two hundred and fifty eight thousand for public art based on the policy. We have not done that transfer for the last two years, so we've we've made it one time, two times in a row. This would be the third year, so the opportunity is you you could continue to not do that. Um, but then you'd have to decide is that one time or ongoing? If it was ongoing, then that means the policy would have to be pretty much, or portions of the policy would have to be. Amended if we're not going to be putting any money into it. We have a fair bit of money um in the reserve of. Seven hundred and twenty thousand in the reserve. Um, and that program supports both new art and maintenance of existing art trades. So, you know, there's a component of it, we need to be at minimum maintaining our existing art. We don't want to get rid of it. Um, but we do have seven hundred and twenty thousand in a reserve.
Which will run out of eventually.
We will run out of eventually if we don't continue to to fund it. It's like I said, we could consider this.
Rather use the word suspend. And and it's an ongoing until it's like putting it on the table. You know, until we lift it back up or we continue, because you don't want to lose your art contribution forever. Which uh, I think if you use the word cancel permanently, now you're in the fight about re reengaging and reestablishing the program.
Yeah.
Suspended for rainy days like we are. And that makes sense to me.
Yeah, although I think it would be honestly easier for us to, because sometimes some of these amendments get hard to track year over year over year. Um, we'd almost have to have this discussion every year, right? And and do we still want to suspend it, right? Because and who who brings it back? Right? As I mean, I guess that's always one thing. Some of these things all could be theoretically almost suspensions until we have. New revenues that's potentially could support bringing them back up again.
Well, you could say that you suspended it until you had two hundred and fifty thousand left in reserve.
Yeah. And I'm thinking of the heritage.
Station back at us. Yeah.
You know how we did the heritage buildings, or it was up there and then it's like when it gets to a certain level, we go to one thing and if it falls to another level, then we do a higher level altogether. So it could be like a double trigger. It's like the, it just that that's what we did for the policy of the heritage building. So I'm just saying that that's something you could do so you have a trigger.
Okay.
Or the other thing you do is you make a policy change. So the so the policy is still alive, it's still functioning, it's around. And then, you know, five years from now, when the art development committee says this policy needs to be redone, we don't have enough money, it's still there, like you don't, it's not lost.
Well, and there's probably tons of stuff in the art policy that's still valid and we need to keep in place. It's just that maybe the funding piece of it.
Yeah, but you, but just adjust the policy to say, what are we at? You did the policy change.
You mean for the heritage?
No, for the transfer for.
It was a, she wanted twenty twenty-four, and then there was a base and inflationary.
There was, there's a percent of, one percent?
One percent tops.
A point seven five or five percent, and then that, and that's an all, right? It's a lot of policy changes, so for this fall.
I mean, if we did a policy on that thing, the heritage might work. I'm just saying, just look at it and see if you think there's a trigger there we can use. Because I think it was like if it was a certain level and we went to a certain amount, and if it fell below that, then we went to a full amount again.
Okay, so at minimum, is everybody in somewhat agreement that we, we don't budget for it in twenty-three? And then we can come up with how we want to do it going forward.
Yeah, because we have the money.
Well, it isn't as a suspension or as, or something.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Um, if we're suspending this, I think we should also suspend the public or the Arts Advisory Committee. Without a micro grant, the Young Artists Grant, or, um, this one, you know, we, we could absolutely save on.
Yeah, but there's still that seven hundred thousand that they could approve new art through, right?
Yep, they could.
And there's lots of repair needed right now, too.
And they still, they, do they adjudicate the mayor's celebration? Although that's not happening, this year will be next year. We task them to do something COVID related.
I guess I, I would just want to be really cautious that we're not having, you know, nine meetings a year when that doesn't need to happen.
Okay, and then the last one, uh, that's on the list that, that we can talk about is, is the pay-as-you-go growth component of this as well. So this is, uh, this is one we continue to talk about as well. We kind of threw it on the table at the last minute, but we're still kind of thinking through the consequences and, and that kind of thing. But, um, you know, like I mentioned, a portion of our pay-as-you-go tax levy, um, goes to support RMR. We actually, we absolutely have to protect that portion that we need, um, for RMR, looking at that going forward. But right now, we use, we use a chunk of it for growth. So it's just really about the whole concept of, um, council agreeing that you're going to have less growth projects, right? Like, you're gonna have less money available to fund new growth projects, right? That, you know, I, I'm gonna share that there's like, there's a couple advantages to that. Of course, um, every, every new asset we build or every project we do becomes a liability the day after it's opened, right? Because we have to now start saving to repair it and maintain it and replace it. So, a, at some point, it delays that if we, if doing less projects. The other potential advantages is, I, I don't know if you've really, you know, really thought about, like, when we bring forward our carry, our capital carry forwards every year. We've got projects on there from several years ago that we still haven't finished, right? So potentially adding less new projects would allow the city to get caught up in some of the ones that we were already approved for, to move forward on. Um, so there's some advantages there. And then it's just the, you know, obviously the perception of, you know, we're facing high tax increases. And yet we're building a bunch of new stuff. And I know it's different, like it's different type of funding, right? It's capital versus operating, but that's not always clear in the community, right? People just see things getting built potentially at the same time as we're also facing a high tax increase. So, you know, but in, in order to make this, you know, it would kind of have to be a permanent reduction that we'd have less money to spend, you know what I mean, for the next however many years until we feel like we have more, you know, room within our tax base, um, to bring that extra funding back in. So it's a tough one, but I guess, I guess my argument from council was, you know, we had part of our, um, taxation guiding principles, we put into one point five percent RMR, is that there seems to be a real commitment to maintaining our existing infrastructure before we consider growth projects. Right? Like that, that is sort of the number one priority is existing infrastructure. And so if you're gonna spend less money on capital, it really should be on the growth side, right? Well, certainly not suggesting eliminating it. I mean, we've got, we've, you know, we've got grants and we've got, you know, those kind of pieces as well. That one would be a big hit for the twenty-three budget because we also just approved one point five million dollars yesterday for another capital project, right? So.
And this is in our budget, this graph. So the blue lines are RMR and the green is growth, right? Do you remember this one? So, you know, in two thousand and, the next couple of years, we only have this much room for growth. So you're pretty much saying nothing for growth.
Well, what we try and do when we make our recommendation on growth capital is we're trying to really take a little bit of a longer term look. So we're trying to look at what is our estimated available funding for growth over about a four to five year period. And then what we try and do when we make our recommendations is we try and smooth it out a bit so that we don't have like a whole bunch of projects in one year and nothing in the next year. Because that makes it hard for everybody to try and manage. So we try, so our recommendations are ba- based on kind of looking at a four-year plan. So if something like this were to be actioned, um, you know, that would, we'd be saying, like, and depending obviously what level you took. So in the first, in the five hundred scenario, right now we have seven hundred thousand. So that would be over four years, that would be meaning of two point eight million less, that we would probably recommend less funding over a four-year period, um, for good projects.
Do you want me to say something? Because you're looking at me.
You look like you want to say something, so I'm looking at you.
Care if we, it, it all goes in the same pot. So if we don't spend RMR, it goes into growth. So we can say we're reducing the levy, or we can say we're reducing page growth. The total bucket to spend from is simply decreased by seven hundred thousand. So, yes, if it makes people feel better, we can say reduce the growth component or keeping the levy. Or we can just say we're reducing the levy by seven hundred thousand next year.
But I think it's the, the articulation of intent to do, are we putting the money into maintaining, or are we putting the money into growth?
It's the same pot. Whatever spills over from RMR goes into growth.
Although the one point five percent RMR levy, we've been actually, because you know how in our capital envelope, we have the components of debt, lifecycle and pay-as-you-go. So the one point five percent RMR, we're actually putting directly into lifecycle. So that that money is kind of protected from the.
Going to lifecycle.
Yeah, it's hundred percent going to lifecycle. And we do still need a portion, like, you know, a good portion of the pay-as-you-go to go towards some of those, um, RMR projects as well. I mean, one of the things I would probably want to look at is, it, because we do have the fluctuation in RMR from year to year, and that's how we've typically done it. If we said, okay, here's how much in the next four years we need to spend on RMR, so everything left over is available for growth. But maybe we need to look like, really what on average are, do we need to be able to spend in RMR? Take that off, like almost basically separate your pay-as-you-go to figure out a methodology to set, take our current pay-as-you-go levy and separate it between RMR and growth, so that there's a clear kind of delineation, so that we don't degrade our RMR portion of it with the growth portion of it. So that we know if we're pulling out money, it can specifically come out. As Fletcher said, it's really about intent and how we articulate that intent about, uh, protecting our RMR.
This one, on, uh, I've been, this is my hard no. Honestly, I'm looking at what we're gonna spend money in twenty-three for growth. Oakmont Truck, um, Red, uh, Meadowview Construction Traffic Calming, uh, Transit Buses. Like, we need, we need growth money. Of course, the community amenities. What else have we got? Dog-friendly parks, they, like, these are, these are important stuff, like.
I feel more comfortable reducing the levy this year. I realize that you have the cumulative thing. I get it, and how math works and by year, but you already, like, just, I feel more comfortable with that. And then really dissecting what's going on here, because the flat one half percent, just saying increasing it. And we know that a lot of the RMR projects are funded by, from grants. So, and I know we can't count on the grounds, I get all of that, but we also know they're, they're there. And that we do heavily use them. So, if you ask me which one, because you said you can't do both. So if you want me to pick my favorite, I'll pick the levy. Where are you? Want the levy or you want the growth?
We need growth, but I understand it's a two-edged sword, because like you were saying, we got growth, we gotta look after it eventually. I'm living in today's world right now, and I'm, we're drowning. So, I'm, I'm, I'm machine on the levy. I realize that it's a hard, it's a hard choice. It's a hard choice. I need growth. Other than my waistline.
And we're gonna get less in LGFF than we're expecting now. That's, that's my guess, so. Pay-as-you-go is important. So if you have to pick one, you can pick the levy, or you're gonna pick neither, or what do you want, do you have? Oh, neither levy is important too. Yeah, so there was other things I was willing to cover.
And, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a whole discussion we've had the last forty-five minutes. There's other things that were coming, but I'm assuming you're gonna inform us about after this, so. Though those things won't be for twenty-three, though. No, that's because of the impacts, yeah. No, I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
Great, Michelle. I'll agree with, uh, Sheena on this one.
I'd rather use more of the most funding to cover that off.
It's possible.
The problem with the, the most funding is just that, like, if we do the levy, it's not gonna back, then it just goes from there and resets. We don't have another increased tax increase next year, because all we're doing is making it harder for us next year if we do the most. Is that we're just like, oh, we're talking, and next year's, now instead of saying it's, it's a five point two, now it's up to six point one.
But a lot of these things that we talked about today, we asked for another year to, to get our heads wrapped around it.
Yeah.
Outside agents and stuff. So use more most this year, and make those cuts deeper next year.
But these are like minor, like this is not going to affect the one, the one million that's being suggested on the most. And like I, like, I really think that that most funding, we should be looking at infrastructure to get that, like, few going together and figuring out, like, we need to have a plan where we invest this in something that's gonna come back and pay it off and not just rip with the Band-Aid. Because the Band-Aid's gonna hurt, we rip it off in a year or two. That's what, how outside I see it. I'd rather just say, okay, we're doing it less this year, then we just go from here going forward, and we don't have a ramification of trying to face the consequences of today. That's where I sit.
Counselor Broadhead?
I don't want to give either of them away either. I, I just look at some of the other stuff. And we're gonna have to bite the bullet here somewhere. I don't know which box you're looking at. I've just, has a sort of been tracking going down here and I don't see us moving to the right here.
No, I don't either.
So.
Oh, God, no.
But, but Wes, I mean, I mean, this was just, I mean, we would have had to prove every one of these to do with what was there, man, and so.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I there's, there's some movements up, uh, on some of the others. Explain to me the assess, assessment growth here. When you talk about
So.
Five, the three, uh, four and the three. Where's that assessment growth, the, the hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty? Where's that coming from?
So, so normally what would happen by policy is that fifty-five percent of our assessment growth, um, goes towards business cases. So typically, budget, we would provide a list of what we would call funded business cases, and we'd have a list of these positions, these projects, these whatever. We could put forward, um, what up to, up to that fifty-five percent.
Right.
By, what the policy says is if we don't use the whole fifty-five percent, that balance, because it's ongoing money, like it's revenue tax dollars. Thirty percent, or no, it's twenty-five, sorry, twenty-five percent goes against the base, twenty percent to RMR and fifty-five percent to these growth business cases.
Okay.
But out of the growth money, if we don't utilize it all, like, so say we don't put forward the whole amount that we're, I don't want to say entitled to, that's a terrible word, that's not what I mean, but the whole amount, or, or council directs otherwise. The balance technically by policy goes to the growth stabilization reserve. It doesn't go against taxes. Although in the past, we have the council's made motions where we've taken that excess and we've put it against the tax base. So what we're saying here is this, this would be you guys telling us, well, we know by policy, you theoretically should be able to put forward one point one million dollars in business cases. But we're telling you now, don't put it forward any more than eight hundred thousand, and that extra piece is gonna go against.
All right, so, so as I read the hundred thousand and the two hundred and fifty thousand, that's actually reduction of the fifty-five percent used.
Yes.
That's all.
That's pointing more to the base and less.
Else is already being used to reduce.
Right.
Okay.
No, sorry, say that again. I don't think that's quite right.
So fifty-five percent goes for business case, twenty percent goes to taxes, and twenty percent to RMR?
Yeah, twenty-five percent, taxes twenty percent to RMR.
All right, so this fifty-five percent, is this a reduction of the fifty-five percent?
Basically, it basically says we're only getting forty percent now, instead of fifty-five percent of that money.
So we could say, though, that, that the RMR component of the growth shouldn't go there. It, it, it could go, and you still have your fifty-five percent or whatever it is.
Yeah, I'd have to think of how the math works of that, because what we typically do, when we say one point five percent, what we see is the equivalent of one point five percent. So what we do is we calculate a dollar value, right? So what is one point five percent on last year's taxes? So there's a dollar value. Then we figure out how many dollars equates to twenty percent of the growth assessment. We subtract it off of that about, and the difference goes to taxes. So it doesn't end up being like one point five, it doesn't end up being one point five percent on the taxes, it ends up being something slightly less than that, depending on the, so it's, we'd have to think of how that math works through.
In a way, it's taxes.
Like, if we reduce the RMR component, Wes, you're gonna increase the taxes. Because this is like, we're taking the, the point two, I think it's point two, right? And that's the contribution towards the one point five levy out of the taxes. So if you reduce it, you just increase the taxes. Okay? So.
Well, so that's, that's, that's my question about this, is where did that come from? So you're saying that this, uh,
Suggesting.
Point nine percent or point two one percent is a reduction of the staff's business case element.
That's correct. And, and that extra money would then be put towards taxes, like put as a base. So now the twenty percent or twenty-five percent that would, that goes to base automatically would now become thirty percent or thirty-five percent and less would go to.
But this, you have it as permanent, right? It doesn't need to be permanent. It could just be for next year. It wouldn't affect future years if you did a temporary.
No, so it is a permanent, it is a permanent decision. If you say, if you say, you know, we, we have to give two hundred and fifty thousand of that back towards it. It is permanent, so it doesn't come back next year. But just, it delays our ability to address our capacity issues, right? And at some point, the capacity issues, whether it's intentional or not, are going to start impacting service levels, right? So even if you don't officially say, reduce the service level, at some point, we're not gonna be able to match that target. Like, at some point, we're not gonna be able to provide that service level, whether it's on the books or not as being the approved service level, we theoretically don't have the money or the people or the whatever to be able to me, to meet that service level, right?
Well, it'd be a permanent tax decrease, doesn't it be a permanent program decrease is what I'm saying. Like, even if you said this year we're taking a hundred grand out, the following year.
Right, so we're saying it's, it's a temporary measure, not, not so much permanent or one time, it's a temporary measure. We can't continue to not address our capacity issues, right? Like, for, for, for several years now, we've, we've done very little of that. It's just one more year putting that extra pressure, which is causing, you know, I mean, it causes its own issues. Certainly from a staffing perspective. Um, but from a pure numbers perspective and how it works with taxes, it is a permanent change, so it's not like it comes back to the taxes next year.
It's hard, because we haven't seen their proposed growth business cases, right? I don't even know what you guys are looking at and how necessary some of those capacity adjusting business cases are.
Well, what we heard last night, though, is there's pressure on that. Just, just to service.
Yeah, yeah.
Pressure on it already.
Only at one point, there was eight million dollars requests coming from departments.
Originally.
About a three, and now they're trying to get it in on, at one point one. And if we take another hundred thousand out, but like, I don't know what the projects are with, because that would maybe help.
But then we're just going into budget. So, yeah, I guess the que, the question we also have to have is, I know we said three to five, but that was also when it came in at a seven point two. So now, instead of saying we want to reduce it by two by two, and now we want to reduce by three point two, congratulations. So I think that that, the discussion needs to be like, does, do you guys need to come in at a five? Or do you need to give us the options and you come in with whatever you come in with, and we have the further discussion.
We'd have to rescind that motion.
Yeah, so there, there'd probably have to be some kind of a motion that, that allows us.
In our package today, you had a, a motion.
Yeah, so that would work if you put it in, like, if you put it, ended up putting in a number higher than six percent, like to maximum of, or, or something like that. Would supers, would supersede the other, the other motion.
I mean, you, the thing is, you can, you've heard the discussion, you can come in with whatever you want, and then we can make the alterations. So if you say here's five, and it's including most, and we choose not to put most in, then
Right.
It is what it is.
So then are you guys supportive of, and obviously you'll have to debate the discussion about what the number is gonna look like in terms of the proposed budget, and like I said, you still have opportunity to debate it and change things and all that. look like in terms of the proposed budget? And like I said, you still have opportunity to debate it and change things and all that. Are we okay to still build like, I mean, I guess we have to to meet that. We'd have to build it into the budget. Tell you what we've built in and then, you know, it would be up to council to eat any of those items should you so.
Well, we haven't talked about the franchise fees yet either.
Yeah, and that's a huge one. And so the actually.
Right.
And so the interesting thing about that one, too, is so that's one that I I would actually need of like a council motion now, because there's processes to go through. If we want to increase our franchise fees for January, there's, there was, if there's notification, there's advertising requirements, there's, there's a bunch of pieces. So that's not something that could wait till budget. If that's something that council wants to do, we have to do that.
No later than October first, you said. You said, so here it says that notice before provided to Fordus no later in October first, you need a council motion.
Yeah.
In September.
I mean, yeah, minimum we need council, yeah, in September. And then we have advertising requirements that have to happen in order for it all to get through the AUC by the end of December.
Advertising requires to have to be before or after we provide notice to Fordus. Do you know?
Like advertisements come after we.
Have to be before October first.
Yeah.
So we can give our intent.
Give it to them then. And I think you have to advertise by the end of October is my understanding, something like that.
Well, there's, there's like a forty five, we'd have to work out the days. I'd be more comfortable if we advertised like earlier rather than, yeah, like sometime in October would give us enough time.
Okay.
We want to have that discussion.
Right now, is there tolerance to even have the conversation about franchise fees? And if it's a yes, then are we looking at two, three or five? That's what you proposed here.
I'm totally against. Wes?
Oh, I gonna get it somewhere. The franchise fee gets everybody. And tax increase only gets the residents and businesses. That's why I like the franchise feed. So I'm like, send out those previous reports so everybody understands them. And I'm, I'm open to it. The rest of the region. We're the cheapest in the region. Yep.
They're pushing people to use electricity now. And I mean, electricity grows every month with the federal fee that they're having on all the time. Like, people will not be able to afford this.
Build for pay their taxes either. Natalie?
Send out the report.
Natalie?
Yeah, I'm I'm supportive. Anything that's gonna reduce taxes for residents, that that's great.
Are you, are you okay with two, three or five?
Yep.
Okay. Mike, it might be hard to ask because you still need to see that report.
Uh, no, but I the little bit that better understanding that I have and that franchise fees affect a broader group. Businesses and et cetera. I'd I'd be supportive of franchise fees and seeing if we can, what it would mean to get to like seventy five percent benchmark of our comparative cities. I don't know where we say, I think I heard we're at sixty, but I pumping it up by.
We're at ten percent and.
No, 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 I mean, as a
Compared to cities.
Comparative. You know, if we were in the seventy five percentile or.
We're right up at twenty percent, so.
But I'm like, are we at this seventy five percentile?
I'd have to honestly have to do.
But that's what I meant.
Have to decide who we're comparing against to make that calculation, right? Is it just midsize cities or regional cities?
Our our comparative midsize.
Well, I've always voted against franchise fees because I can never figure out how we arrived at them. I mean, they seem to be arbitrarily numbers pulled out of the air, but I'm willing to at least have that discussion as to. So I'm with I'm with basically broad. I mean, if we can have that discussion, but I'm not necessarily saying I support it, but I'm willing to look at.
So you wanted a kind of a
Well, I need to.
Yeah, I wanna, I mean, I think, I think some of the processing needs to come in, but I, like I said, I've consistently been against them because the numbers seem they're just arbitrary numbers that we pick out of the air.
I'm a hard no, but that's not a surprise. And I would, I would go with three percent. Because I think in the region I heard, I didn't hear anything less than thirteen, so that gives us a million bucks. And I I need to know, it's, I know it's four thirty. Is it worth going in camera to talk about the the gas franchise fees? Are we gonna, are we looking at a million bucks? Are we only looking at two hundred?
I think that I would potentially say we don't have to have that question today.
Okay.
Um, maybe at the next CO dot love or something like that, you could just chat about it.
All right.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, obviously, I don't expect you guys to like necessarily to be the franchise fee piece today because I don't think that's necessarily fair for some newer council members as well. I'd like to be able to at least send out the the analytics and stuff that were done in the past and it really, nothing's really changed from that. And that was just the number we selected at the time was the ten, was the ten percent. Um, but the underpinning rationale behind it really hasn't changed. So I'd like to get some.
But I think we can do, can absolutely, that's our educational, do the comparators, right?
Yeah.
Come back. Albert sits like comparators and here's a recommendation.
Like maybe for to the first meeting in September or something like that, we could, we could do that or middle second meeting in September. By the end of September.
Sounds like the sooner the better.
Gives you more. For sure. We need to, we need to have a decision before, by the end of September.
So. Okay, so we have, okay, first of all, is there any, is there any member of council who has something else they want to bring up? In the way of concrete service level reductions.
That are gonna impact twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
How do we, we don't have, I mean, those are the big discussions that we're gonna have, that are gonna actually, the service inventory, the all those discussions, but so, like, right now, we're I still get the feeling we're nibbling at the edges.
Okay.
And I mean, I I'm not gonna just pick a.
No, I just thought maybe you had something new.
Yeah, I I mean, yeah.
I'd like to move that grass cutting goes to fourteen. From twelve.
Snow clearing goes.
I think that might be the bulk of our two thousand and thirteen conversations, though, is snow clearing.
Two thousand and thirteen?
Twenty three. The service level, we'll have to have a lot of conversation about service for the next.
Oh, service level, service delivery, there's a.
Yeah. Yes. So there's motions in front of us. One of them, it says franchise fee, but we don't need.
Yeah, I would suggest we just do that today.
Second one says that administration prepare the proposed budget for consideration and X. So.
Can.
He wanted us to narrow it?
I think Sheena, I think Sheena's comments are correct, right? Based on the there's when you guys prepared, we were looking at different numbers. So we went with that in that frame. We tried to give you a a field goal. We probably just narrowed the hash marks, but now, now I think we need to broaden them. But do you need a range again? Or do we need to?
I would motion to rescind that other motion.
And you just do it as normal.
Whatever we.
Yeah.
Through through collaboration with, oh, someone, whatever we want. I mean, we're having.
Don't come back with the.
We understand what 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 the expectation is, right? I mean, you guys, whether you feel comfortable leaving that wide open or whether you want to.
Well, I mean, if we get to five percent, so definitely I'll get into three.
Not today.
Yeah, so.
So.
But but this is the last of our sort of budget conversations before we present it in October. And right now, you've been told three to five.
Now we have to commit at a minimum.
So do you guys want to keep it like that?
Yes. Where are we at with what we've discussed? I don't even know what we're down to in theory.
I don't think we touched.
From where we, where you think we've come to some kind of consensus? Where are we sitting right now?
Well, we didn't really change much. And honestly, we'll just, we'll just change probably the most funding to to balance it out. If we're, if we're told five percent, right, if we're told five. You know, there's a few things you guys said were a hard no, so that's fine. We'll, we'll kind of take them off the list and we won't consider. And so depending what number you give us, whether it's three, four or five or six or eight, it's just gonna decide what of those other short term one time levers that we can pull for this year. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's the only opportunity we have.
So we're at eight two for this year and next year, did we revise those numbers for twenty twenty four?
Yeah, so we haven't yet. So we're, yeah, because of course, the 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 things that led to the increase to the eight point two also impact future years as well. So we haven't gone through and done those future years like we forecasted, but we're working on that.
Okay, do you think you'll have them for October?
Um, potentially, yeah. And I mean, you know, the other, the other hope, though, is as well, is I mean, we're basing it on the economic situation that exists today when we're forecasting out two years from now. Hopefully inflation comes down, hopefully, right? Like, so hopefully those aren't quite as bad and we'll have some other offsets. You know, to help or hopefully we'll get, you know, some businesses in Lakeview and we'll have more growth revenue.
Yeah.
That can help offset, right? So it's just sort of like what we're doing today, if the, if the same economic circumstances exist three years from now as they do today, and we're providing the same services that we're providing today, that's what the tax increase.
Okay.
But but I think, you know, the the critical piece becomes still that the decreasing flexibility we've got in our reserves, those one time levers, right? This might be temporal, maybe it's three years, maybe it's five years, and then times are good again. We don't know. The problem is it's it's sort of one year, one time lever stuff that eventually will run out if matters.
I'm just really hesitant about that because we're using relying on that too much.
Yeah.
Like, we used some of that most money. It's too weird.
Some of that most money.
For that infrastructure to get to.
No, that was different.
Was that wasn't for that? That wasn't for the infrastructure.
That was for operating.
Yeah, that was.
Sustainability transfer.
Yeah, it was.
Another big chunk of money for infrastructure that we did.
All the MSP, the.
The ever.
Milas fund.
Yeah, and that's.
That was, that was for capital.
You and Bujo. And intersection and the roundabout.
Transit and rec, they're both lower than what, can I look at your numbers here and your projections? You're looking at about a ninety percent of what you were before or what you're projecting? Like, where are we at with the the usage of?
Oh, revenue.
For revenue, yes.
Revenue, service, like recreation revenue, sleep fountain park and service place, about seventy percent. About that, uh, pre-COVID numbers.
COVID.
Transit, I don't know if Jay is online.
So which ones do we move in?
Or will?
Yes.
Give us a different number.
So not we're, oh, the motions. So, um, I'm just curious as to, and you can, you can just send us an email later. I'm just trying to figure, because I know when I said that quarterly, you're like, okay, we're ninety percent of projection, but the projection could have also been lower, right? So other than what we were dealing with before, I'm just trying to figure out what, and I'm, but the other thing I'm wondering is, is it increasing? So like, are we still flat or are we actually like going in the direction we need to go? Because I haven't seen a chart or graph.
Well, fountain park.
I just.
That's a pause.
No, 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 no.
But otherwise are we increasing to where we're going? And I'm thinking more transit right now, just because we have built them closed right now. That's where I'm trying to figure out. And I, and I just, I don't know. I mean, for transit, I can see why if people, because they started using the other methods, but I'm not sure, other than the building closure, if the building was open, if we would be at a hundred percent and if we're not, why? I guess for rec is what are we thinking for this? Because that will help us figure it if we're actually gonna get there for twenty twenty four or not. You following?
Yes, we are on the upward trend on the recreation facilities for sure. Um, and again, this is a quieter time of the year, so fall is the membership drive and I'm trying to bring all those people back. Transit, I'll have to check with Jay. I don't think it as, as a, I don't think the coming as quickly in transit, but we can.
Because that's really the intention of the most was to compensate for that until it first. So what I think would be interesting is how much are we subsidizing those two out of the most money? Because that would have a bit more justification as to doing it is that we're doing this until those levels come up. And maybe that number needs to be different than what it may be.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. Um, so actually, before we jump into that last motion, I just wanted to have a quick conversation about the the next steps that we had, because I don't, we do, I think we do have a motion for it as well, but I guess I wanted to get a sense of council had any thoughts or concerns around how we approach this conversation going forward. I know, I think it was Counsel Killik, you had mentioned that, you know, there was one municipality that literally went for, went up for four days straight to talk about service levels. We're not proposing that. But we did have a little bit of a skeleton plan. You know, for council to consider. And I guess I just want to know if you're generally kind of supportive of that kind of an approach. We need to work through the details for sure. You know, for administration to understand like how many meetings and when and who would be there and how would we facilitate and all of that, because there's gonna need to be lots of ongoing conversations.
Yeah, and I think that the timing is important. So as opposed to waiting for the normal budget cycle throughout, I think this fall and early spring are are the discussions to make significant alterations or significant decisions to enable your decisions for twenty four.
Natalie?
Thanks. Dan, can you remind me, at the beginning, you were mentioning that if we do two of these levers, it's basically disastrous. Was that RMR and most?
Uh, no, RMR and the pay as you go at the bottom, the pay as you go gross and the RMR.
Okay, so right now we have both of those in this motion, so we need to take one out. Is that right?
We're not making.
We're not making a motion.
We're not making a motion at all. Okay.
I don't think, I don't see any motions coming out today, do you?
Well, the only thing you would need to do if you don't want to, on a you can direct us if there's levers that you do not want us to touch, you can pull them out.
I don't think we had unanimous.
And if you want to give us a person, an actual revised percentage, you'd need to, I mean, at some point, even if you don't want to give us a range, like, we have to somehow get rid of that other motion or change the number.
Or eight. I almost do it, right? That's that's other option.
Be significant.
That will just kill us in twenty twenty.
Uh, why don't we just rescind the other motion?
And just let us bring in.
I didn't. I know you're gonna do the best you can. Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll see what it.
We can only recommend here.
Can I?
It'd be a recommend.
Yeah.
That's all.
Natalie?
Can I just throw, I'm completely opposed to touching the RMR fund. I I don't want my children paying for this.
Okay. I think there is a fair amount of this.
I'd like to know who's taking all the M and Ms.
People are digging them out.
By the name of Ken McKnight.
I don't think we're making that decision today, Natalie. I think that what we're trying to figure out is, what do we do with this motion? And I mean, we could, you could bring it forward just for rescinding for next, for the next thing. And that way, because it, the the problem I'm seeing is I don't want to see an artificial reduction, just so that we say we meet the goal.
Right, right. That's why I say rescind the motion and.
Because and we're just gonna come back up again anyway. And I think you've had all of our feedback.
All right, thank you.
I think it's been great.
We've had a very good idea of your appetite and where to go and not to go. And so if you're comfortable allowing us to bring it in, at the end of the day, you'll debate it, you could, you'll meter it over the course of the discussion.
We want it to put down.
Okay, so what I'm seeing is we need a notice of motion probably to do the electrical franchise fees or do it today, but I don't think anyone's ready to do it today.
Yeah, so I think we'll bring that forward like first or second meeting in September with maybe a full.
Okay. Oh, and for the second motion, if we move that, we're gonna have three hours of debate on each one of them.
Yeah.
Right, so that I think, I think the feedback and the straw voting you got kind of serves the purpose of number two. And then three, that council provide input. Well, I don't think we need to give a motion on.
Okay, that's fine. We just.
We were. I think we're quite excited about talking about service levels and.
Well, that's where.
But it is an opportunity for us to actually pull some more significant levers for next year.
They're not even levers. They'll actually be, oh, no.
Yeah.
Changes.
Yeah, it'll be changes.
It's a little flower.
David, you wanted to popped up for a reason.
Did you miss us?
Yeah, I, I, no, I haven't missed you. I've, I've, I've been here all along.
I'm gonna clear that up.
No, I just, I just wanted to confirm that from, you know, the discussion that, you know, is my understanding. I don't think you need any motions today at all. Uh, the direction is clear. And if if administration thinks they need a motion to rescind that three to five motion, we can bring it forward. But I don't think any motions are required coming out, you know, today, unless you want to go in counter, you need a motion for that. But other than that, I don't think any motions are required today.
You're highly confident that we would be making some decisions today.
Okay, I'm very happy with the way the discussion went today, to be honest with you.
Yeah. And I think this is what we were looking for a month ago or whenever.
Yeah.
Although I'm glad you, the the presentation you gave at the beginning was very, very similar to what you gave us to camera, which was good for the public.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cover the next steps? Do we have that? Do you want to cover that at all or just in the area?
Yeah, I think, I think we're kind of planning based on the agenda part, what where our kind of plan is. So we'll work on a, on a much plan and agenda. We'll, we'll put it out for your feedback and and obviously it's got to work for everybody. But the intent is that we we kind of start fall, really, what what the key for us is once our PDB like the, all the services are scored and ranked against councils or against the new results and all of that. That's kind of the. That's kind of the starting point because that gives us a real good, because we won't have the costing of that done yet, but that's that's actually okay. I think the prioritization of those services is really big. It gives us a starting place. So that's where we want to start with council once we have that ready.
That was March, you said, right?
No, earlier than that, like November, October, November, we'll have the scoring and the quartile piece done, and we just won't have the costing done until probably March or April.
I knew there was a March. Are we still having a snow clearing workshop?
Yes, we have.
Fourth third.
Okay, yeah.
Scheduled.
And it's this service level.
Outside.
Just stop sapping snow.
We're going to do it outside.
The bubble.
Okay, uh, meeting adjourned.
Excellent.